Testing, yeah. So, I think everyone's just getting themselves settled. Lovely. So, welcome everybody this morning to the special meeting of Devon County Council. You will all have read the papers, I'm sure, but we are here as a special meeting to consider and make comment on the report that you've got about local government reorganisation. I know formally opened the meeting, I'm supposed to say, so well. So, moving on to agenda item one, apologies for absence. I have received apologies from councillors Davis, Ead, Fife Cook, Granger, Hopley, Julian, Ketchin, Lodge and Rousal. Is anyone aware of any others? Councillor Hodgson.
Councillor Ead.
I've got him here already, but better to do twice than not at all. Any others? No? Okay, so those are noted. Thank you. So, move on to item number two, declarations of interest. So, this is simply a reminder to members of the council to declare any interests that they may have prior to any discussion taking place on that item. At the appropriate time in the agenda, I will ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to outline the position for those members who sit on other authorities and who may be attending other meetings regarding local government reorganisation. Okay, so, item number three, my chair's announcements. So, may I ask members that if you want to speak, please catch my eye. I have the helpful team here who are also keeping an eye out. So, if I don't nod at you, please keep waving your arm around and someone will spot you and I will take you in the order in which you're spotted. Contributions should add to the debate and not repeat what has already been said and you're tasked to turn off the sound function on your laptops and indeed phones to silent or off, please. Notification noises can be quite distracting and additional background noise makes listening difficult and it's particularly difficult for people who are watching online because the microphones pick up all sorts of noises that happen, not just the person who's speaking. So, I'd appreciate that, thank you. When you do speak, if you could use the microphone, the button to the left, now use your microphone to the left and it's the right hand button, I believe. Okay. So, the purpose of this meeting today is to gauge views on the future organisation of local government in Devon. Whilst neither the council or the cabinet have the final say on structures, it is important to shape our debate with a consideration for our communities and the residents of Devon. We may have different views on these issues and robust debate is a healthy part of our democracy, but can I ask council to keep focused on our remit today? One other thing that I would ask all members is that it's been brought to my attention that obviously we have troubles with trying to get as many cars parked on County Hall as we would like. On the cobbles, there is, there's no parking spaces laid out, so people tend to park a little bit further apart from each other than would normally be the case in marked spaces. May I ask when you're using, when you're parking on the cobbles to try to be aware of parking fairly close and indeed of being courteous to staff who are seeking to help get maximised that capacity? Thank you. So, moving on to agenda item four, items requiring urgent attention. I'm not aware of any. Any others? No. So, moving on to agenda item five, this is petitions, questions or representations from the public. And of course, the public are always welcome at these meetings and we welcome questions and representations. I'm not aware of any petitions to be presented, but I will ask if any member of the public has a petition for presentation to the council relating to local government reorganisation, as this is the subject we're talking to, talking about today. And no. Okay, thank you. As there are no questions or representations from the public, so let us move on. Agenda item six, petitions from councillors. Does any member have a petition to present to the leader of the council regarding local government reorganisation? I'm not aware of any. Okay, so, I will move us on to agenda item seven, questions from members of the council. There are two questions from a member of the council. I remind other members that this is, as this is a special meeting, questions are only permitted on the subject of the agenda, i.e. local government reorganisation. permitted on the subject of the agenda, i.e. local government reorganisation. Questions and answers have been emailed out and published to the web with some hard copies available in the chamber. Supplementary questions should be brief with no statements. Question one is from councillor Bailey and councillor Arnett has given a written reply. Councillor Bailey, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do. Oh, sorry, thank you. The report allocates one officer team for every four neighbourhood area committees and a single £40,000 shared pot, despite repeatedly promising dedicated teams and meaningful devolved budgets. Government guidance requires that neighbourhood governance must be properly resourced and not tokenistic. On what basis do you believe that the current Devon model, one team across four neighbourhood area committees and £40,000 between them meets the test? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bailey. Councillor Arnett, if you'd like to respond, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Bailey for the question. So, as we know, these proposals from all the councils in Devon go forward for further consultation. At the moment, what we've been able to do is identify a certain amount of democratic support that would be proposed in this proposal and a certain amount of early, early and quite simply identified funding support for the neighbourhood area committees themselves. However, that is really, as far as this report is concerned, just really the germ of the idea. It hasn't been worked up yet and one of the reasons for that is because the legislation in relation to neighbourhood area committees has not been passed by the government. We're certain that we're doing the right thing to have put so much work into them because the former minister of state at MHCLG spoke in Parliament only in June that the government wanted to see these things worked up. So we have done it as much as we can to the, to the, to the best of the knowledge that we have at the moment. Speaking personally, wherever this eventually falls, whatever the outcome, whatever the selection that the government makes in terms of the reorganisation of local government in Devon, these neighbourhood committees are a must. Because what we are seeing with the destruction, frankly, of the districts is the removal of an entire tier of representative government. And so my own personal conviction is that these must be in place. If indeed local government reorganisation definitely goes ahead, we must assume it will, then it is important that they are a central part of it. And I think we look forward to, after submission at the end of this month, working even closer with all of the districts, particularly with the Devon Association of Local Councils and all of the parishes and towns, to make sure that they have got as much substance in them as possible. I try to be glass half full in life, I'm so sad the districts will disappear. On the other hand, if the neighbourhood area committees function well, for the first time, you have the ability for parish and town councils to sit in the same space as the highest tier of local government. And I think that has the potential to make up for what is at the moment a risk of items falling between the slats of towns and districts and the highest tier. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Arnett. Question two is also from councillor Bailey and councillor Keeling has given a written reply. Councillor Bailey, do you have a supplementary question?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So now on to the meat of this meeting, agenda item eight, local government reorganisation, council consultation. So... Okay. Yeah. First, I'm going to ask the senior officers who are going to ask and answer technical questions to come down and sit in the well. How we're going to run this is that I will take questions in blocks probably of three and officers will give technical answers to questions initially, followed by the leader, deputy leader giving a councillor response after that, okay? I'll just let people get settled. Okay. So, and thank you Meg for coming to keep an eye on me. There is one item on the agenda today on which the council is asked to give views, as stated on the agenda. The recommendation of the report are that council be asked to consider the content of the report and draft business case submission, including key findings, implications thereof and proposed actions. Secondly, to note the preferred option for local government reorganisation as outlined in the report and to be considered by cabinet on the 18th of November 2025, in line with section 9D of the Local Government Act 2000, as amended by the Localism Act 2011. Thirdly, recognise the process and timescales for submission of proposals to government by the 28th of November 2025, as requested by government and as set out in the report. And finally, to share any views it wishes the cabinet to consider as part of its decision making process. Is that clear to everybody? We know what we're doing. It's important that council recognises that the matter of putting a preferred option to government is a decision for cabinet, not the council, and that the monitoring officer will explain this in more detail shortly. The leader and deputy leader have made it clear that they wish to gather the views of this council prior to this matter being considered and a final position being agreed upon by council, by cabinet. This is the purpose of the meeting today. Members will be aware that the papers that have been produced for the meeting today are a culmination of over 12 months' work of, by officers and members. I have been advised that this work has also been externally validated by a number of experts in this field. In terms of responding to debate and questions, this will be answered by the most appropriate person. As I've just mentioned, technical or operating, operational matters or even service specific matters may need responses from statutory officers who are gathered here to help with this today. Political or strategic responses will be provided by the relevant members of the leader, deputy leader or relevant cabinet member. Thank you for your attention, councillors, and I will now invite the monitoring officer to speak in more detail on process and interests. Thank you. councillor Connet.
Chair, I'm not actually sure if it is a point of order, but I do want to raise a discrepancy. I think, Chair, you said the cabinet, when it meets on Tuesday, will consider the points that the council wishes to make, but that's not the case. The cabinet recommendation is to note the views of full council, not to consider, not to discuss, not to debate. If this council is to have value, then the cabinet needs formally to debate. So whoever chose the wording for the recommendations for cabinet on Tuesday, may we have an assurance in this meeting now that the cabinet will properly consider, debate, discuss whatever it is members here wish to say and the points they wish to make to council, rather than have it simply noted? Because if it's simply been noted, we might as well all pack up and go home now.
Thank you councillor Connet. I'm going to, who am I going to ask to do this? Possibly the head of Legal and Democratic Services, Maria?
Yeah, let me answer that. I mean, I did give Alan my personal assurance that we would consider these in another meeting. And so I'm surprised that he feels that he needs to raise that again here, but as he has, I will give everyone your assurance that the cabinet will consider all comments, as we should and is right and proper to do. And we will do that at the cabinet on Tuesday. So I won't say any more now, because I'll say it in my introductory remarks, but just be reassured that absolutely your views and ideas and thoughts will be considered at the cabinet on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brazil. I think the head of Democratic Services and Legal would like to comment as well. Thank you.
Thank you leader, thank you Chair. Just to say that that recommendation can be changed and the wording from noted to considered. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to hand straight back to you to talk about process and interests. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So this matter has been brought to the meeting today to gain the views of council, which will be subsequent, which will subsequently inform cabinet of your views for consideration prior to its meeting on the 18th of November 2025. As just outlined by the Chair, the minutes of this meeting containing those views will be submitted to the cabinet for their consideration alongside making the final decision regarding making a submission to the government. It's the intention that the minutes will be published today, provided to all members so you can actually see those. It's a very short timescale and we recognise that. This matter is not for a decision, sorry, this matter is not a decision which is reserved to full council within our constitution and I refer the council to the Functions and Responsibilities Regulations, Statutory Instrument 2000, 2853, as amended by, by the Regulation Two and Schedule One. I would like to mention interests and refer members to the detailed advice that I issued to all members on the 7th of November on lawful participation, particularly for those of you who hold dual roles across authorities, or also known as twin hatters. Under the Localism Act 2011, councillors may express views or campaign on issues without automatically being deemed to be predetermined of their position. However, it's essential that all members approach this matter with an open mind, ready to consider all relevant information and debate before voting, recognising that today members will not be voting, but twin hatters may be voting at another authority. If you receive an allowance from another authority involved in the reorganisation, this may constitute a disclosable pecuniary interest or a DPI. Whilst I've granted dispensation to allow participation to all members, you must know that this dispensation does not override the legal requirement to avoid bias or predetermination. To support transparency and good governance, please ensure that any relevant interest are declared at the meeting. You have not made public statements, this is just a closed mind, and you're able to demonstrate that your decision is based on the merits of the case and the evidence presented. Given the importance of LGR to this authority and all authorities in the area, my advice has been validated by an external KC, and that's an independent validation. I'd really like to thank all members for your attention to this matter and for your continued commitment to lawful and transparent decision making. There's also some sheets to, to help you with wording for your declarations, should you need to make any, which are within all your papers today. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. Sorry, a little bit of feedback there, forgive me. So before, before I open the debate, I would like to remind members of the usual process for amendments. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at a time. However, I remind members that the role of this meeting today is to capture the views, perspectives and themes expressed during the debate. Officers will record these themes for the minutes, which will be published later today in order that they are available for the cabinet meeting next week. I will shortly call upon councillor Brazil, councillor Brazil, to formally move the adoption of the recommendation as outlined in the report and ask if there is a second. And then I'll open the debate. I'll then, now therefore call councillor Brazil to formally move the recommendation as outlined in the report. Councillor Brazil. Oh, councillor Hayward.
Thank you. Just for clarity, you mentioned earlier there were going to be questions. Are you intending to incorporate the questions within the debate or questions first to the officers in front and then debate once those questions have been answered? Is that your intention?
I think we will incorporate both, so if you have a question, then we will absolutely make sure you get us an opportunity to cover it. What I might do is, actually, I might ask for technical questions first.
Thank you.
Just to do those, thank you for that, it's really helpful. Councillor Brazil.
Thank you Chair, and I will formally propose the recommendations on the paper. Thank you.
Thank you. And do I have a second? councillor Hookway.
Yes Chair, I'd like to formally second the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So councillor Brazil. And I'm now going to move to the debate and ask if there are any other members that would wish to speak. As just suggested, and we've got you councillor Hayward, let's start with technical questions first. If others turn up during, later on in the debate, please don't hold back in asking them. This is your opportunity across the whole council to both ask questions but also to express your views. Thank you. So I've got councillor Hayward, councillor Neil Stevens, councillor Helen Brown as a start, councillor Alan Connet, councillor Dermot McGough. Are you taking notes of these? Yeah. Okay. And others, of course, will have an opportunity later on to ask questions and make comments. So I'm going to start with councillor Hayward, please. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So mindful of the monitor officer's advice, I'll read my little bit. I speak today as a councillor who also serves on East Devon District Council, although it should be made clear that we haven't at East Devon received the final report, so that cannot be used to predetermine our view on today's debate. And I am mindful of the responsibilities that come with this dual role. It is a pecuniary interest. I also have a pecuniary interest as an employee of a town council. I'm unique in the, I think, the UK that held three roles, all of which overlap. That is evidently a pecuniary interest, which is on my registry of interests and will inevitably be affected by whatever permutation of LGR transpires next year. So I've declared my interest in accordance with the Code of Conduct and have received the dispensation to participate in this debate. I understand the dispensation relates only to the management of interests and does not override the legal requirement to avoid bias or predetermination. Just for clarity, is every councillor going to have to read out the same thing or can we take it as read? What's your, what's your best thought?
I'm quite happy to take it as read. Thank you.
Otherwise, we will be here till that tea time. Thank you. So before we move into debate, it's just a very technical question. Page 28 of the report that you circulated says, "Our proposal is for the creation of a new Devon unitary council, replacing the existing county and districts to form one democratically accountable body, serving a population of just over 800,000." Tick. Equality impact assessment says the new Devon unitary authority would serve 840,000 residents. Which is it? Thank you.
So I'm not sure which officer is best placed to answer that. Kerry Gendron, thank you.
So the current population of Devon is 842,000. So I think the, the report is saying around for the 800,000 and in the equality impact assessment, I think it's similar, but if you want accuracy, it's 842,000.
Chair, thank you, that doesn't answer my question. The report contradicts itself. What, so is the new unitary authority going to be 800,000? Is that what Kerry was saying?
Officers, I'm going to ask you to take this technical question, please.
So the proposal for a new unitary Devon would be replacing the countercounts on the district footprint that currently covers a population of 842,000.
Thank you. So why does the impact equality say, so the new council will cover 800,000? Where have the 40,000 people gone?
I don't think they've gone anywhere, but we will correct that. I think, I think it is just the way that the report was written, it was a rounding. Because you're talking about 842,000.
Forty thousand, with all due respect, 40,000 people isn't a rounding.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a good consistency point and as we've repeated, this has been done at pace and there will be these odd areas, but yeah, point well taken.
Thank you. So who have we got next? Okay, thank you. councillor Neil Stevens, please.
Yeah, thank you Chair and councillors. Michael has asked me, or Michael Fyffe Cook has asked me to relay this. He apologises, he's not here today and he wants me to share his thoughts. So I'll try and keep it as... So I'll try and keep it as quick as I can. In truth, whatever is said around the table day has limited.
Chair, I might apologize, point of order, are we in questions now or in debate? It seems like a statement rather than a question.
I was indeed just going to ask that very question.
I thought it was comments as well.
Yes, we can, but you might have more impact, councillor Stevens, if we wait until we get technical questions out of the way first. And I'm keen for all councillors to have the greatest impact they can in this chamber.
Chair, just give me guidance when I can stand up. Thank you.
Thank you. So who is next? Councillor Helen Brown, is yours a technical question or?
I hope so.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. My question is, have we costings to date, including staff hours, on the work completed by Devon County Council on local government reorganisation? And if not, why not? And can we know total departmental costings going forward? And this is after all ultimately being funded by our taxpayers. Thank you.
That certainly sounds like a technical question to me. Thank you for it. And I'm thinking that this is for Angie, Director of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me through this one? Perfect. So yes, we are trying to capture the additional costs that the county council has incurred in external support. We have not yet captured the arms and legs of officers that have been involved, so the park costs. We are currently just short of £200,000 on those extra costs and as I say, we're in the process of capturing the other costs and happy to share that once we've completed that piece of work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. I hope that answers your question. Next, moving on to councillor Connick, is yours a technical question? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. If my memory serves me correctly, apart from Exeter, every other district in Devon in the county council footprint is parished. There's no area outside Exeter which is unparished. In the proposal for new Devon, Exeter City Council, as is dissolved along with the other district and borough councils, and the proposal in the paper is for charter trustees. Is there a reason why the proposal does not include an arrangement for Exeter to be parished or to have its own council, a parish town council? So for example, in Cornwall, Truro has a city council but is effectively a town council, and in Somerset Wells, why, what is the technical reason that this council is putting forward charter trustees? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, councillor Connet. Who is Director of Democratic Services and Legal's best place to answer? Thank you.
The intention is that it will be parished, it's the holding period legally, so we can protect the rights effectively. We've been asked not to start any new structural reviews during the LGR process, which is why we're proposing to put it to charter trustees until we can put it into a parish situation. There may be other ways of doing it, that's just a proposal at the moment to protect it.
Most certainly you can, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So with the neighbourhood area committees as a model, it very clearly sets out that initially they will be advisory consultative because the ambition is to have them more active, for want of a better description, subject to legislative change. In my reading of the report that's come to council today, the council doesn't set out charter trustees as a staging post to a council for Exeter. Am I right in understanding that or have I missed something? And if I am right in understanding that, was that, why would we have said something about our ambitions for neighbourhood area committees but not stated our ambition for Exeter? Thank you.
Maria, thank you.
Because it's not an ambition for Exeter, it's a plan that it will happen, it's just we've been asked not to start new processes during the time period, so that's the only reason that there is a real, it's not a pure ambition that we're waiting for legislation to pass, it's just a holding position to protect the rights until we can set that up effectively, well, until the new authority can set that up. So slight distinction between the two. Legislation hasn't caught up on the neighbourhood committees, whereas we've physically been asked not to start new reviews such as parish in Exeter, whereas legally we could.
Moving on to councillor McGough, do you have a technical question? And was that a hand up?
I definitely got a question, I wouldn't consider that technical, just some clarity please, Chair. The report that has been produced by the officers, senior officers, has it been done purely by the officers or have we engaged with consultants? Because unfortunately, my experience with Devon, we do love using consultants at taxpayers' costs. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McGough. Who's best placed? I'll ask chief executive to respond to that. Thank you.
In terms of all the service areas, statutory officers have carried out that work within their departments. So public health, adult social care, children's, finance, that's all been carried out by the officers of this council at different levels in terms of involving frontline staff as well who operate these services, including highways, so all the services. We have engaged consultants, we were allocated some funding from government to do that as part of local government reorganisation, and that has been to get additional legal advice in key areas. That's been the main thrust, but we're quite happy to, as Director of Finance and Resources has said, that all of this will be detailed and shared as part of this process. So we've tried to limit the use of consultants as much as possible because when it comes to service delivery, it's those who deliver the services and run them that should be advising on this matter. And I finally say that I absolutely welcome that all the work that officers of this council have carried out will be assessed by government and what we've asked all the statutory officers to do because we think it's very important is to seek validation from other officers currently working in local government in the same posts to validate their work, as we do with all their work. So it's been benchmarked and validated by other directors of children's services, other directors of adult social care services who do the same work currently.
Okay, thank you, councillor McGough and Dona. I've got councillor Bailey next, followed by councillor Hodgson. Thank you. So I've just realised I was going to do this in blocks of three, but we're just doing one on one because it just seems easier if that's okay with you all. That's what we're doing anyway. Councillor Bailey.
Thank you. I just wanted to check with officers, please, about the democratic representation under the proposal. According to the chart, North Yorkshire has 5,433 residents per councillor, but under Devon's proposal, my maths, and this isn't spelt out in the in the report, there would be 7,850 residents per councillor. Is that correct? Because there's a big, big difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Who is going to answer that question? Councillor, sorry, Maria Price, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So this is based on the electorate as opposed to the population, which obviously takes numbers down. The current proposal would be around about 6,500 electorate per councillor.
Thank you. Councillor Hodgson.
Thank you. I just want to also just to declare interest as a triple hatter.
Councillor Hodgson, could you move the microphone a little bit more closely to the left?
Fantastic, thank you so much.
So yeah, just wanted to declare my interest as a triple hatter, which is also Southhames District councillor and Tottness Town councillor, and obviously I'm not going to be making a decision today anyway. So I'm just thinking about the representation and the loss of councillors' elected representation, and I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration given to the role, potential role of citizens' assembly, either at the one Devon level or at the neighbourhood area committees level at any stage.
Thank you for your question, councillor Hodgson. Who is going, who would like to answer? Which officer? I mean, I'm assuming somebody's going to answer that question because I can't. Oh, sorry, Meg Booth, yes, I'm sorry, no.
Thank you. Thank you. So this really would be very much a matter for any new council, for the new unitary authorities to determine, and it's something that they would be, I'd assume, more than willing to consider, but we can't tie a new authority effectively, so it's something for a new authority to take into account on who they want on those boards and area committees.
Basically, the answer's no.
I think the answer is it would be for a new authority to determine who was on the neighbourhood committees, so there's nothing precluding that being the case and that's got nothing set in stone yet. It's not something we could tie a new authority to, but I'm sure that it's something that would be considered by a new authority.
Thank you. Next, I have councillor Tilslie. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just a quick question. The proposal cites 107 councillors in the new authority. Could I just get a quick explanation as to how the number 107 has come about? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I think that's probably a Maria one. Thank you.
I think it is. So the number has been very much worked from bottom to top, so you don't start with the number of councillors, you start how many committees, do you think a new authority would need, taking into account the rurality, the representation angle so far as people, the spread across the county. So the number's been very much drawn upon by looking at benchmarking, looking at current caseloads, looking at what we think caseloads would look like going forward, and that's how the number of 107 has been reached. Also, very, very firmly trying to follow MHCL guidance and Boundary Commission guidance. We are deeming at the moment that the county is exceptional so far as the size, so MHCLG and the Boundary Commission are saying that 99 is the magic number, but they will consider exceptional circumstances. So we have considered things like rurality, committees, neighbourhoods, even down to what outside bodies would new councillors need to be appointed to, what work would they need to do in the area, and that's how the number's been arrived at. There's a degree of science, but and also a degree of foreseeing what a new authority may want.
Any other technical questions at this point? Sorry, so sorry. Councillor Raik, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and I declare an interest as a double, triple hatter as a Southhames District councillor.
So could you move the microphone sort of point towards you? Thank you very much.
And Blackawton Parish councillor. In Maria's answer before last, she said that it would be up to the successor council to determine who would sit on the neighbourhood area committees. Can we just clarify that it would also be up to them to determine whether indeed there are neighbourhood committees or not?
Maria. So the proposal at the moment does work on a structure of neighbourhood area committees. It would likely to come in the structural order from government when they decide which proposal will go forward. They will set out what they expect the structure to look like. So yes and no to a certain degree will be very much what government decide on upon the structure, they will put in the structural order, it'll then be for the new authority to put that structure in place. I don't know if that answers where you were coming from.
Thank you. So councillor Trail, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I've just done some arithmetic here. With regards to page 28 of 842,000 residents, with 107 councillors at 6,500 residents each, that comes to 6,95500, so we're a bit short.
I am most certainly not a mathematician. I don't know if anyone wants to speak to that.
So figures are based on the electorate as opposed to the population, and your electorate's obviously less than your population as people get older and get to the convotes, if I'm explaining that properly, so populations will be a higher number than your electorate.
I'm actually going to ask a question of clarification, if that's allowed, which is of course with councillors, we serve all our population, and I wonder if you could just clarify the numbers of population and the number of voters in each of the, on average, for 107 councillors? Just for clarity.
So we're just trying to do some quick and dirty maths on this. It will vary, obviously, so we're going to be given an average, but we think your population's around about the 8,000 figure and your electorate around about the 6,500 figure.
Does that provide clarity for members? Okay. Any more, I've got councillor, no, okay. Councillor Wainwright, thank you.
In view of their importance, to what extent would parish and town councils themselves have any influence at all on the constitution of the neighbourhood area committees and the way in which they are likely to be represented?
Thank you for your question. Again, I think it's one for Maria. Thank you.
So the proposal is that towns and parishes will be part of the neighbourhood committees, they'll sit on those committees. Again, the constitutions are something that will have to be written by the new authority, but the aim is that they will be partners on those committees, they will have a voice and will provide that local, that local voice, so yeah, that they will have a part on them to play.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Graham Bell.
Thank you, Chair. I'd also declare that I am a triple hatter, I sit on North Devon Council as well as Bronton Parish Council. My question is regarding the survey itself. A good consultation went out. One thing I noted though, of course, we had the roadshow, may have been seen to have not quite come up to the north as much as it's been to the south. We do have 20% of the population in the north. When I look at the results, I can see some divisions. How much of those results are coming from the online responses and how much of them are coming from the roadshow? Because I think we may see some, the results may be squiffed because of it. I'd be interested to know those sort of numbers.
Thank you for your question. I think possibly, is this one for Kerry Denton? Thank you.
We can undertake further analysis to answer that question, but we haven't got that fact here for you today.
Okay. Councillor Bailey? And please do keep these technical questions coming.
Thank you. And I'd like to declare that I'm a double hatter as well. But, so I think I've got the figures right in my head, that there's 6,500 electors under this proposal. Am I right in understanding therefore that that's more than 1,000 voters over the next largest representation? So for in North Yorkshire, there's 5,400 electors per councillor, and under our proposal there'd be 6,500. Is that right? There's going to be a potential democratic deficit and maybe that's not a question for the officers, maybe that's more a question for the leader.
Councillor Brazil, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Jess. I mean, it's quite clear during the technical questions here that this isn't exactly, is many councils are exercised by the representation, and absolutely it's something that we will look at and discuss at the Cabinet on Tuesday. And, you know, in that sense, that's exactly what this is about, is we want to gauge the feeling of councillors and what they feel like. So once again, I can give you my personal assurance that we will be looking at the numbers of councillors and bearing in mind that, as you say, you know, why should Devon have 1,000 extra residents or voters per councillor compared to the next biggest? So yeah, no, that will be, absolutely be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Tilslie, thank you.
Thank you very much. A question for the Director of Children's Services. It talks about the risk, the report, sorry, talks about the risks of disaggregating children's services. Just what specific areas are at risk when we disaggregate, the idea of disaggregating the services? And does it entirely rely on one area within children's services? Is it school catchments? Is it SEND provision? Where are those risks, please?
Thank you for your question.
Thank you for your question. So the risks are all aspects of children's services.
Forgive me, you're going to have to talk into the microphone, otherwise people can't hear you.
Yeah, apologies, I'll have to look away from you to answer the question. So all the risk factors are across children's services, so the key elements are that the way that children's service is structured in Devon, we have a set of arrangements which mean that we can meet the needs of the population over the county council profile. So one of the key factors would be that a lot of our special SEND provision is not distributed equally across the county, which would mean any reconfiguration of the county would disrupt that arrangement, and that's been a feature of other councils who've gone through an LGR process, which means councils have had to invest in additional provision and additional resourcing, and also incurred additional costs in terms of home-to-school transport, all those factors as well in terms of those challenges. I think particularly, I'd want to stress the particular challenges of Devon in terms of geography. Unlike some other areas, obviously, we've got a large place called Dartmoor in the middle of Devon, which does restrict our ability to make sure we distribute all the resources. The other elements, more importantly, in terms of children's social care, is the improvement journey we are on at the moment. We now have a permanent workforce of middle and senior managers, which have been successfully recruited over the last couple of years, and they have been recognised by Ofsted in terms of the improvement journey underway, and we're waiting for the report from the Department for Education which confirm that. And that will show that actually we've got the right ingredients in place to improve children's social care services. The risk and evidence from elsewhere when changes happen is you disrupt that senior middle management workforce, people get then moved elsewhere. You know, having been a social worker myself, the most immediate concern you have is who is your manager above you, and that goes right through the organisation. So having competent, high-quality managers is critical to providing safe services for children's social workers, and also indirectly how we protect children in our community. So that's a big task in terms of what we need to do. Obviously, part of the other challenge you'll be aware of is the big SEND challenge across the country. There's a report from the county council networks in terms of the budget pressures, et cetera. That has to be a major priority in what we need to do. Small councils through LGR can deliver improved, great services, and I'm not questioning that at all. What I am saying is that will take, you know, any LGR proposal will impact on the ability to deliver good services for at least five years, because that's the average times it takes to change services and improve services at the rate necessary. And even the new LGR services, in some of the recent changes, they're still receiving particular financial help because of the challenges they're having to deal with following LGR. That's a long answer to a straightforward question, but hopefully gives you a bit more context, in a sense, understanding what you're about to, you know, discuss in more detail.
Thank you. Next, I've got councillor Rogers, followed by councillor McGough.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank officers for giving the information, it's very worthwhile. Have Dalke been consulted? Have Dalke commented on, I think we have 416 town and parish councils? If we've got any guidance, have what their views and feedback is?
I'm so sorry to stop you. Could you just move that microphone so it's pointing towards you? You can still stand up, but...
Have Dalke given any feedback on the proposals?
I'm sorry, just for the record, could you just ask your question again?
Have Dalke given any feedback as to the proposal and the 416 town and parish councils in Devon at the moment?
Thank you.
So we've had a meeting with Dalke specifically, and we've run an online session for all town and parish councils, which was recorded and shared for those that couldn't make it. We had some feedback there and then on the day, and that is going to be in the draft business case. I can't remember the number to refer to, but under the governance, no, forgive me, not the governance, under the stakeholder engagement section, it would give you a summary of the feedback that we had. We had questions about neighbourhood area committees from memory, and we also had questions about the role of towns and parishes going forward, so that is covered in the draft business case.
Councillor Rogers, you're indicating you'd like to just come back on that?
Thank you. Do you see the number reducing for 416 or wherever the number is in the 400s?
The LGR proposal makes no change for town and parish councils, and there's no requirement to seek to change town and parish councils under the statutory invitation from government.
Okay. Thank you. Maria, would just like to come in on this as well, please.
Just on a technicality there, it's likely to increase because of the exeter angle. So if anything, it will increase slightly rather than decrease, but Kerry's quite right, there's nothing in the proposals that decreases the numbers.
Thank you. Now, although I've just said councillor McGough next, I'm afraid I'm told that councillor Beadman got his hands up first, so if you're happy to let councillor Beadman speak first?
Absolutely, he's a fellow Liberal Democrat, of course I got him to speak first.
Councillor Beadman, your technical question, please.
This is definitely a technical question, Chair, because I didn't hear what councillor McGough said. It is ridiculous. So will the new authority allow us to sit down so that we match up to the microphones that we are provided with? Because, you know, we're all having to be, one of the things, I mean, officers there, bless them, are trying to do this, trying to get eye contact. Can we just sit down and so we can all take part in the debate? We can all hear the debate? I know it's in standing orders, but I just think it would help us all because if we could just sit and talk and everybody can hear what's going on. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So councillor Beadman, I think that's an absolutely fantastic idea. I mean, I would just reflect that we are in a building which, whenever it was built, 50s or something, it is listed, we are limited in the acoustics, it is, I have to say, there have been times when it's been so dark in here and it's been so hard to hear people, it's been a surprise, let's put it like that. And what I'm going to propose, if council is happy with this, is for us to suspend standing orders for the rest of this meeting to allow you to sit and speak rather than stand. Okay? Do I need to take a vote on that? Yes, I need to take a vote on that. So, and I suppose probably someone ought to propose that, not the Chair.
I'll propose that, Chair.
Thank you. Who would like to second? I've got councillor Bell seconding that. So all those in favour of suspending standing orders on sitting and standing? Yeah, I think that's well carried. Thank you very much for raising the issue. Thank you. And now moving on to councillor McGough. Thank you. You don't have to stand.
No, thank you very much, Chair. I accept what councillor Beadman said, but you want to sit down. I don't choose to sit down because I represent my public, so therefore I will stand, with pure respect for my public. That's my personal opinion. Page 156 for me. A Devon unitary council is the most financially advantageous and sustainable option. Can you explain to me, please, how advantageous to my public it would be with a net benefit of £224 million? But yet, it doesn't highlight anywhere our historic debts of this council, which would then go into any new unitary council that's formed, we still carry on historic debts. So I don't really see how, you've got to come into finances, people don't really like talking about it, it's not my money I'm talking about, therefore you have to be even more prudent with this. You know, can you explain to me the advantageous benefit of 10 years when our historic debt, it's not political thing, historic debt won't finish until 2059? By the time I'll be a little old man then, my little stick, hopefully, you know, walking around, but can you explain that to me? It doesn't give a true reflection of the debts that we're actually in and the trouble we're in.
I personally cannot answer that question, but I have absolutely no doubt that the Director of Finance and Resources can. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to come in on this one. So councillor is quite right, the debt that Devon has and the other councils within the County of Devon will not be expunged, government has made that quite clear. The debt will remain. Typically, if the county council were to be disaggregated, it would be shared out on the basis of population. With the 911 proposal, the debt of the county and the districts, not all districts have got debt, but most do, will join together and be the responsibility of the new unitary council. So there is no expungement, no write-off of debt, government has been quite clear. So the financial advantage set out in the paper is around the ongoing revenue, running costs of the new unitary council. By bringing together councils into one organisation, there are savings that will be driven out. For instance, we would no longer need the eight district council 151s, we would not need the county council 151, we would just have one officer. So there's natural savings, same with the other statutory officers, same with the chief executives. So there are savings and efficiencies over scale, there are efficiencies around bringing services together. There are costs involved in that. Of course, nothing in life is free. So the paper sets out what the one-off cost of transformation, severance costs and so on are within the paper. We've then calculated what we think the savings will be. It is modelling, of course, we're not setting a budget for the future council. We are trying to look into the future and say, what might this look like? What might the savings be? What's the scale of it? And then we've sought to say, what would the payback period be? And the 911 proposal that's before you, the new Devon proposal, is the most financially advantageous, it has a payback period of just two years to pay back those one-off costs, but nothing is free, there are costs involved, but the savings will come from bringing together purchasing power, efficiencies, saving and offices that we just won't need anymore. I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Rogers, and then I've got councillor Bell and councillor Trail.
Thank you, Chair. The government have written off some debt in Surrey, so they have set the precedent. Do we think they'll set the precedent elsewhere in the country going through LGR?
Director of Resources, please.
Thank you. I'm a member of the Society of County Treasurers, and we've had this very conversation with the head of MHCLG Finance, and he laid it very clear that the write-off of the Woking debt was a one-off, and government will not be looking to do it again, it was an exceptional circumstance. I, like you, was interested to know if this was going to happen, but at the moment the government are saying no, it was a one-off exceptional intervention that they had little choice but to make because of the financial situation at Woking. So I'm not expecting it to be duplicated.
Thank you. Councillor Bell.
Oh, that's easier. Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'm going to be very polite. You mentioned that obviously services will be amalgamated, positions will be amalgamated. Currently, I have great respect for yourself, I have great respect for Mr Triggs in North Devon, Mr Miles in North Devon, and for Donna. That's nine people's jobs. One person's going to be doing nine people's, what is currently nine people's jobs. That's a lot of job. Yes, we may be losing eight positions, but that's a lot of, you know, one person can't realistically carry out of those. You'll need more assistance, more help, more people working within those departments. So is there really such a big saving?
In unitary councils, then there are opportunities to be able to do things differently. I previously was chief executive of unitary council, with double the amount of staff responsibility and numbers that I have here. So there are things that can be done differently in terms of how you run that unitary, and equally so, there are examples across the country at the moment where we have unitaries operating with one chief executive, so absolutely can be done. I think it is important to note that I wouldn't see any change in our frontline staff because they have caseloads to manage, they have people to work with every day, so in terms of many of the services directly linked to people or directly linked to, you know, whether it's waste services and so on, I would see frontline staff numbers being maintained. The economies of scale do come when it comes to strategic posts, and also because there's direct line of sight rather than going through two, three, four, five organisations, it does give you a simpler line of sight to make things happen. But certainly it's more the back office where you can bring processes together and simplify processes. But it's very important to say that we met with our trade union representatives and we've been very clear that we do not see savings in frontline staff, and it's important for our staff to hear that today across all the councils in Devon. And certainly, if you look at the unitarisations that have taken place in the last five years, there have not been significant savings with frontline staff. Angie, in terms of finances?
Yeah, thank you. So there is no expectation that one person is going to do the work of nine. The work simply won't be there. So at the moment, for finance and colleagues across Devon, there will be nine sets of accounts being prepared in the future. There will be one set of accounts under this proposal. There are nine budgets being produced, there'll be one, and so on. Nine sets of council tax, there'll only be one. So not all of the work will disappear, and our model doesn't assume that all of the work will disappear, but great sways of that statutory work simply won't be there. Thank you.
Thank you. I've noted you, but I, Richardson, okay. Thank you. I'd like to ask councillor Trail for your technical question, please.
Thank you, Chair. With the debt incurred by the Liberal Democrats back in 2008, at the meeting last year, we did speak about paying back the debt, but we couldn't because it would cost us more to pay back than what the debt actually was. So that debt is being paid back, I think it's 74,500, is it, per day?
So I think this is a technical question.
So will that debt be passed over if it's, if the unitary gets split up? Will that debt, which was incurred way back, be pushed out to other areas? And again, the members of the public paying their rates, paying that debt off?
Thank you for your question. Director of Finance?
So yes, the debt will transfer to new unitary councils. You're quite right, to repay the debt early would typically incur premiums. We do keep an eye on the current rate of borrowing, and if there are options to repay and take out debt at lower rate, then we do do that. But with our cash position because of SEND, we don't have the option of repaying the debt outright, we would have to try and refinance at a lower rate. So the investment team, head of pensions and investments, monitors that on a daily basis. We're currently looking at some options to repay some debt at a premium, repay others at a discount so that they offset. But the general thrust of the question is that debt will transfer, it won't disappear, and there's no expectation that the county council will repay it before unitary comes in.
Thank you. You're indicating you'd like to just further, gain further insight into this answer?
Yeah, supplementary on that, basically, because we just mentioned about investments and pensions, and what's happened now is that the government have told the Investment and Pension Committee that we have to go into a pooled system, which basically, I think, they're trying to tell us what we can do with our funds. So I think we, whoever takes over everything, we need to be very, very careful of how the government at the present time tries to tell us how we can spend our money. With the things that are happening in this world at the moment, we're so, so close to a massive, massive war worldwide. With all this going on now, I don't know why this government have actually brought in, trying to get a unitary debate going and changing everything when we're in such a mess.
Councillor Trail, what we cannot tell, well, we are reacting to what government is doing rather than other way round, so we're just here... So we're just here to ask technical questions at this point. I've got you Councillor Cox, thank you. Yeah, next on my list is Councillor Haywood, unless there are any specific responses on a technical nature to the supplementary just raised by Councillor Trail. There's no more answer, there's no more clarification that can be given on the result of that. So I'm going to move on to Councillor Haywood for your technical question, please.
Thank you Chair. Just responding to the chief executive's comment a short while ago about the protection of frontline services. I noticed within the implementation costs savings that there's 445 posts identified from the rest of the workforce at approximately 25,000k per post. Now, our own statistics show that a lot of, the majority of council staff, district and county are long-serving, they're above the average age of employees, so there's costs there. And obviously with, the technical question is, there's 445 posts identified at a relatively small amount of redundancy. There's senior posts of £100,000 each, 29 of them, but 445 at 25,000, which is actually a small amount of redundancy. So that would make me think that they're actually frontline people. But again, we don't want, we're not here to alarm anyone, but I just want absolute honesty and clarity that if it's in the report that 445 roles are identified, an absolute assurance that none of those are frontline staff. Thank you.
I'm not sure who is best to answer that, but I'm going to ask an officer to answer that.
I'll respond first and then pass over to Maria. I think it's important to say the majority of all the posts will be in the top three tiers which are linked to management. But I'll ask Maria to explain because I'm glad you've raised this question because we had this discussion with our trade unions in terms of turnover and retention, how we manage the vacancies. There may be some frontline staff, but the majority will be in those top three tiers. Maria.
Thank you Donna. So in terms of posts being identified, they're not specific posts as such in terms of going through each tier. Where we're looking at lower level posts potentially, it's back office services, so the traditional sort of HR, finance, IT, procurement, et cetera, those sorts of areas. But as Donna said, it would be looking at the higher tiers. What we try and do in terms of redundancy is mitigate against that. So our turnover rate at the council is about 11.3%. So that natural turnover would hopefully mean that we'd be losing that sort of number of staff anyway and redeploying as much as possible to minimise those costs. So the number of 445 has been reached by financial modelling of a percentage, basically.
Thank you. Sorry, hold on half a sec. Thank you. Because there's an ever-growing list, this is really a great opportunity for people to ask your technical questions and really interesting so far. Next person I have got on my list is Councillor Richardson, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Going back to the net benefits over 10 years, 224.3 million over 10 years really isn't that much of a saving considering the billions of pounds in annual budget. And, you know, we are presented with the opportunity with LGR to also have our say. You know, I know we're being told what to do by government, but surely as part of these proposals, there is an opportunity to challenge government on, you know, some of the statutory obligations that we're being held financially ransom. So what is as part of these proposals being done, you know, to try and seek further savings?
Thank you. I think that's wonderful. Director of Finance?
So we have been prudent in our savings, we've not tried to over-egg this pie. What we don't want to do is set up a future unitary to fail by raising expectations. We've looked at what other unitaries have managed to achieve. So we've looked at North Yorkshire for instance, who is a relatively new unitary and made sure that we're in line with what's actually happening on the ground. And we've looked at other proposals, but no, we have not gone overboard on the savings, we've been prudent in our approach. Local government, as you all know, has undergone significant periods of austerity and cuts in our funding. So significant savings have already been made from the county council and our districts too, particularly in Devon. We are not well-funded. So I think the scope is not as great as it might be, but we've looked at it, we've tried to be realistic and pragmatic in what we're proposing, but not to over-promise. I wouldn't want to set up a unitary to under-deliver. But we've done a lot of work comparing ourselves with others. We've had our own work validated by an external organisation. We chose to use a local government expert rather than a generalist accounting firm for instance. So we've used an organisation called Local Government Futures that is well-respected nationally and within Devon by our district colleagues and our county council colleagues. They've looked at the work that we've done and said what we've done is good, it's right, it's a sound basis. They've then carried out their own work as well on a different basis and come to the same conclusion. So within the paper, you've got two sets of figures, one that we've produced ourselves in-house and then the external company. The figures are slightly different, but the conclusion is the same, that the new Devon, the 911, is the one that's most financially sustainable and that 451 won't work in Devon because the five councils that make up the north-east quadrant just won't have enough money to deliver services. And that's been externally validated. I know that there are other papers being published that show that it does work. My understanding though is that those finances have been based on a head of population basis and that just doesn't work. So our services aren't delivered equally to the population, it's based on demand. So what we've done is used the base data and then used our own knowledge of the cost drivers. So for instance, bridge spend isn't by population, is it? It's based on the number of bridges and where they are. Same with roads, same with social care, it's based on demand. So we've used our knowledge of the demand for services to do the costing of whether it's financially sustainable or not, rather than simply a broad-brush population estimate because population just isn't representative of our experience in Devon. I hope that's helpful.
I just going to add in, in terms of for people's services and it's whether homelessness services, vulnerable children, vulnerable adults, it's all increasing need that we have to manage on a day-to-day basis, greater and greater vulnerability. Our director of public health on an annual basis is showing that increasing need in Devon across the system. And I don't know if Steve, you would like to describe that because it's always a choice for you as members every day in terms of how we prioritise that need, but we basically have more need than we have budgeted resource for.
Thank you Chief Executive. So in public health, obviously we look at need and just to amplify Angie's point, as an example, our health visiting service, obviously, we looks at the number of live births. That's not distributed evenly across Devon, so in the 154 model, we have nearly about 4,000 live births every year. Compare that to 2,750 odd in the south part of it, but the budget's not spent equally. So there'd be more public health grants in the south and west than there would be in the north and east. Similarly, we look at our access to service around drug and alcohol, alcohol admissions, sexual health services. Again, it's not about actual numbers, it's about need. And again, what the evidence shows us is there's a greater need in the north and east than there would be in the south and west. But when you allocate the public health grant, which is on a population basis, you have less. So if you were to be the director of public health in the north and east, the need would be greater, the budget would be less.
Thank you. Councillor Connet.
Thank you Chairman, I wanted to return to the issue of debt. Not for me to give advice to the Conservatives, but it's probably not their strongest argument. They were flying that flag in the county elections and it didn't do them so good. At the end of March last year, the hidden Conservative debt in this council was £74 million. They call it internal borrowing. That's borrowing that they didn't take from external organisations, but were using the council's cash resources to do. One of the reasons that internal borrowing is now being externalised, when you combine it with the significant impact of the SEND debt, which is now what at the end of March next year expected to be around 160 odd million pounds, is in order to support the work of the council. The SEND issue is a direct consequence of Conservative decisions at government not to deal with SEND and to tie this council to the safety valve agreement, which gives us £91 million knowing that demand in Devon was rising. Conservatives did nothing for this council, they've driven it into debt, the debt is owned by the Conservatives and they ought to accept it.
Thank you.
The question that I'm coming to, that officers may wish to, whatever the outcome of the LGR proposal, if there is new Devon, all of the district council's debts, I assume, get aggregated into new Devon. That means, I think, that in areas like Teenbridge, which is debt-free, it, those residents will effectively be paying the debt not only of the county council as is, but also for example East Devon District Council and others. Is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Director of Finances, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, all district debt and the county council debt will be aggregated under the proposal and the cost of that shared then through council tax equally, through the council tax harmonisation across the whole of the new council boundary. With the council tax harmonisation at the moment, depending on the district you're in, you pay slightly different council tax. So there will be winners and losers in that harmonisation, but the total quantum of council tax that's collected will remain. It simply means that some areas like West Devon for instance, that have a relatively high district council tax will be slightly less and council taxpayers in East Devon for instance, who are relatively low, will pay slightly more. But the quantum overall is the same, but yes, it will be shared out and aggregated.
Thank you. Moving on to Councillor Cox, thank you.
Thank you. I've got two questions for the Director of Finances. Did at any point the council democratically vote against your, against the advice of treasurers or previous financial advisers on taking on the debt? Was that, was that, were they advised against that at any time? And the other thing is, obviously we've heard that Teenbridge is debt-free. As someone who's chairman of a food bank, I'm really pleased that Teenbridge also make the people who earn, people who are basically in poverty, people in the very bottom of the pile, pay no council tax with one of what...
So I'm going to ask you to come to your question, Councillor Cox.
Couple of councils in the country that do that. Will that continue under the new unitary? Will the council, will the very poorest have to pay some, could they be required to pay some council tax?
Thank you. I believe that's for the Director of Finance again, thank you.
So the council tax support scheme at the moment is administered by the billing authorities. So that's in Devon is currently our district councils and there are different schemes across. And when the new unitary council or councils are formed, there will be an equalisation of that policy. So and it will be for the new administration, the new unitary council, to decide what their council tax support scheme is, based on what's affordable and political will. But I can't tell you whether they'll pay or not because it's a matter for the new council, for the new administration to set their own council tax support schemes within the legislation.
Thank you. Moving on to Councillor Stuart Rogers.
Thank you Chair. How do our staff feel about this? Because we're nothing with our team. Do they feel worried? Do they feel motivated? Do they feel they need change? How do our staff feel?
Who's going to take this one? Thank you.
Thank you. So we've been regularly engaging with staff, so we've had various staff briefings about it. We also run regular change and resilience sessions with staff. The feedback has been largely at the moment that it's unknown, so it's unsettling, but actually until they know the direct impact it will have, staff are kind of, are okay. I'd echo the points of the Director of Children's Services in that as things get closer, depending on which model is chosen, the level of disruption will undoubtedly distress staff. And I think that's where the concern comes around the frontline services, to reassure as much as possible that whether it's district or county council, those frontline services are likely to see minimal change for frontline staff. But I think at the moment, staff largely are feeling okay about it, but we're regularly engaging with them to try and reassure them and tell them as much as we're able to share at the moment.
I'd add in that everyone in the council is committed as corporate parents to improving our children's services, that is a whole staff commitment. We have staff across the council working on SEND, supporting care leavers. I would have to say, I think that that real focus and cohesiveness, you know, we're 700 staff on a call this week focused on improving our children's services. I have to say that the matter we are concerned about is any form of disaggregation of our children's services, how disruptive that would be. And that professional commitment to improving children's services, that is a concern for staff. And particularly many of our staff are committed in our communities to SEND and improving that. And they have a lot of discussions about SEND. So there is a concern that the huge transformation journey in SEND may be disrupted. So those concerns have come through.
Thank you. Moving on to Councillor Raich, please.
Thank you Chair. Turning if we might for a moment to services currently provided by district councils. The report talks about aggregating and unifying and aligning these, but is sort of nebulous on the details. Do the savings identified in the overall business case include savings from this somewhat vague process of unification and alignment?
Thank you. Director of Finance, please.
Yes, so the savings that are set out include savings from districts and from county council. They've all been amalgamated and as Donna said earlier and Maria emphasised, the majority of the savings come from staffing and it's the top two or three tiers, depending on the scale of the organisation, that make up the bulk of that. But it does include district and county council.
Thank you. Moving on to Councillor Bell, please.
Thank you again Chair. You mentioned earlier that underfunding has historically blighted Devon and we know that to be true and it is a very sad case, having just come back from Surrey, you can see the money on the streets. How does this process allow us to rectify that? I mean, we are going to government with this proposal, how much can we expect them to actually change and to recognise that Devon deserves to be treated equally with the rest of the country?
I'm not sure if that's a technical or rhetorical question, but I shall ask somebody to field that, please.
Yeah, I would say that's a political question in terms of your influence and perhaps that could be responded to by the leader because it's about lobbying for funding for Devon. Thank you.
Councillor Brazil, I will indeed hand that to you.
Thank you Graham and yeah, I think we can all agree that here, that the unfairness of the funding that Devon gets. Can I just say that, you know, we will lobby as we always do to try and get more funding? It's never worked in the past across all party administrations, I have to say. And I think the danger of this whole process is that... is that it is being used as a smokescreen to somehow say that this is the silver bullet that will sort out the finances of local government. It won't. And if we don't get proper funding from central government, then we will begin to cut some of the services that the most vulnerable in our communities absolutely need. I think the job of all of us here is to lobby as much as we can as one to say to government, we need proper funding down here. And, you know, if that means tax rises, general tax rises, then maybe that's the way that we'd have to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to remind all of us, and I will try and do this myself as well, to try to use people's titles, their surnames. It's particularly for the benefit of the public who may be listening to this. Thank you. I have no more technical questions that I'm aware of. So forgive me. Councillor Ledbetter, please. Once we've finished the technical questions, we'll move on to the debate of this report. Okay? So councillor Ledbetter.
I was just wondering, obviously, it's a very important issue for Devon. I was wondering why we couldn't come forward with one unified idea for government, bearing in mind that Liberal Democrats run the majority of district councils in Devon. Why couldn't we just have one unified approach to give to government?
I think that's definitely a political question. So I pass you to either councillor Brazil or...
Andrew, you obviously don't know the Lib Dems that well. I mean, it's, you know, herding cats springs to mind. But, you know, seriously, I think it's absolutely right that people have their own views. And I'm assuming that we're going to have our own views here across the chambers today. You know, we each represent our communities to the best of our ability and will come up with a solution that we think is best for our communities. So if that means that we differ with each other, then so be it. I absolutely do not agree with whipping in the sense that councillors should be forced to take decisions that they feel, in their own mind, will be of detriment to their community. So, look, in an ideal world, absolutely. But that's not going to happen. And so we would just have to make the best of what we get. And what I will say is that whatever happens to Devon and whatever the decision by government is, you can rest assured that that is when, actually, we all need to pull together and make sure that we deliver the best we can for the people that we represent.
Thank you, councillor Brazil. Councillor Arnett.
Yes, I'd just like to build on the leader's reply there in a technical respect. So technically, of course, in Devonshire, what Plymouth is Labour, Torbay is Conservative, you have two independent districts and then you have a number the Liberal Democrat. And technically, the problem we've had, all of us, this year, has been the absurdity of the timescale. So if we'd been sitting in this chamber this time last year, we would not have known that local government reorganisation was about to be thrust on us. That would have come in a letter coming shortly before Christmas. And so in that period of time, the government has repeatedly moved the goalposts. I and many officers have sat in a number of webinars where key factors, key asks from the government have been consistently moved. Sentimentally, I agree with councillor Ledbetter entirely. Ideally, there would be some things speaking for one voice for Devon. And we might have been able to get to that if we'd had, say, until Easter. But we haven't and we are where we are. And I have no doubt that all of the councils putting forward proposals are doing it in good faith, in their own interest, as perceived by their leadership. And everybody's doing the best they can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Arnett. I have councillor Haywood. And I think that's it for technical questions. Councillor Haywood.
Thank you, Chair. I was sort of indicating to the vice chair that when the debate starts, because I think we're coming to the end of tech questions, I'd be delighted to make a contribution. Thank you.
You are second on my list for when we start the debate. So just to check, any more technical questions from members of the council? Councillor Rogers.
Is a message to our MPs, technical or debate?
I'm sorry, I'm really struggling to hear what you're saying.
Sorry, we've got to send a message back to the MPs in Devon that we need their help so they recognise from the government that we need support in Devon. Is there a technical or a general question?
That's more a question to be raised during the debate because the technical questions are for the officers to be able to give you clarity about matters, about services, costs, processes, all of that sort of stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, though. It's good to clarify. Thank you. So I'll just let the officers come back to their seats. And then we will move into the debate. And I have councillor Neil Stephens as the first, but I'm just going to wait for people to sit down, if that's all right. I think it's easier for them and easier for everybody else to hear as well. Thank you.
Could we have a five-minute natural break so we can go to the toilet, et cetera?
I'm actually going to ask for a show of hands because I'm easy on this matter. So all those, if you feel a little break would be useful, I'm going to ask for a 10-minute break only. I'm seeing that it's actually, in which case, I am going to temporarily... I'm going to adjourn this meeting for 10 minutes, whatever time it is now. Okay, so if we can be back here at 20 to 12, please. 20 to 12. So councillors, if you could take your seats, please. Okay, so councillors, it's now 20 to 12. I hope that small break was helpful for everybody. And so now I'm going to reopen the meeting. Thank you for all coming back so promptly. Appreciate it. So we're now going to move into the debate section of today's meeting. I'm going to start by inviting the leader of the council, councillor Julian Brazil, to set the scene. Councillor Brazil.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, so as the Chair said, I sort of set the scene about how I see this is to help inform the Cabinet. And I'm going to start with, and it sort of makes me feel a bit like a groom at a wedding with all the thank yous. So first of all, I'd like to thank all the officers and their team for all the work that they put into this. And I'd especially like to thank my colleague, Paul, who, councillor Arnett, who has gone to, I dread to think how many meetings, to convey our views, listen to people, listen to the businesses, community, the universities, the list is endless. But so thank you, thank you, Paul. I mean, that is genuine and heartfelt. And can I just say in response a bit to what I think councillor Brown Helen... Sorry, I find it a bit... I always call them by first names, but anyway. Councillor Brown said, "You're absolutely right about the time and effort." Because the frustration for me is all that time and effort that we have all put in, not a single education, health and care plan, a timely one of those has been done because of it. Not a single care leaver has been housed because of it. And yet those are what we should be concentrating on doing. And yet we've been deflected into spending so much time and effort into all these, into this. So anyway, can I also say that in a way, you know, the comments from councillor Connet and the response that he got, the sense of frustration that councillors feel that they are not taking the decision. And can I just say, as Chair of the Cabinet, we share that frustration because we're not taking the decision either. That is a decision that will be taken by government. Government have foisted this process upon us and government will be taking the decision. How ironic that when they talk about devolution and moving decision-making down to a lower level, they then decide to choose how that we're going to do that. And the irony is certainly not lost on me. So it's not news to anyone that I'm no great fan of this process. But we have to do what we have been asked to do by government to try and get what we think is the best solution for a unitary for Devon or unitaries for Devon. And this is the opportunity for you as councillors to have your say in all of that. And I have absolutely full confidence that you will take the opportunity to express the views of what you think will be best for your communities in this new world that we will move into in local government. And I should also say that not only is it your communities, but you also have a responsibility, and this is a balancing act that each individual must take, that it's not just about your local communities, but it's about the whole of Devon. And in a sense, what's good for Devon is good for you and it's good for your communities. So there is a balancing act to be had there. And I quite understand why cities may look at it in a different view to, say, a rural area. And those are the decisions that you will have to make. So I think I should, obviously I'll preface these remarks by saying that I may be predisposed to a particular view, but I'm certainly not predetermined and who knows, I may be persuaded during the discussion, the debate to change my mind. But if I just tell you a bit about my personal journey in where I have come to in this matter, and it has been a bit of a journey. As a district council leader, I was very keen to see the districts have a proper voice and it not for, just to be consumed within Devon County. And I can see merits in the position that they put forward. I think, you know, we're wrong of me to say they're totally wrong and we're totally right. I've never had that view. I think there are merits. But I think having come into administration here in Devon County, and I should particularly say in respect of children's and my responsibility as a cabinet member with responsibility for children's services, that there is no doubt that a few years ago, this authority, and it had been for many years, had been failing some of the most vulnerable people in our communities, our young children that needed our support. And I am delighted, I'm thrilled to say that I think we now have in place, and Julian Worcester pointed out that, that we now have in place a senior and middle management within that children's team that are absolutely making that difference now as far as children's services are concerned. And it may be just a timing issue, but now is absolutely not the time. And Geoff, I totally agree with your points of view there. We'll have a nice debate about debt in the, when I'm sure it comes to the budget meeting. But as far as is this the right thing to be doing at this particular time? Absolutely, I concur with your views there. And so when I look at children's services and I think of the various options that have been forward, it is absolutely crystal clear in my mind that to break up what is, what I am absolutely sure will be a successful team of talented and dedicated officers in order to fit into a new system of unitaries would cause chaos and the disaggregation, it would just be disastrous for our, for our children's services. And so in that sense, just on that one particular issue, I would say the strength and the strength of feeling that I have around children's services means that I could not, with my hand on my heart, say that any other option would cover off the fact that we have a great team in place, we're making a difference, we will be supporting those young people. And who knows, in a few years' time, that may not be the case, we may be in a position to change. But at this moment in time, we had of children's services that we need to make those changes. We need to make it better. And I think that the nine one one, as it's called, the option that we're putting forward as a single Devon is absolutely the right thing to do. Although, as I said, I'm not predetermined because I might change that, because I might have, you may change my mind on that, because obviously I'll be debating at Cabinet and not today. Anyway, I'll leave it there. There was a few comments I was going to make about some of the issues that came up, but I think I will leave it to Tuesday, where at Cabinet, to make those cases. Anyway, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Brazil. The motion was seconded by councillor Hookway. Would you like to speak now or reserve your right to speak until later?
I'll speak now, Chair, thank you for your, if you don't mind. So I think we've heard a lot of very detailed answers and technical questions. And I think now we have the opportunity to look at this from a strategic point of view. Because otherwise we're going to be mired, mired in detail. My own particular background in public service reorganisations stems from my time as a teacher in Plymouth in the nineteen eighties, when Plymouth was run by Devon County Council and Devon County Council went through a major reorganisation of secondary schools in Plymouth. And that reorganisation was done extremely well because there were very clear aims and objectives, there was a realistic timescale and there were also very effective arrangements of human resources. And as we have seen today, the proposals that have been forced on us by government offer none of those advantages. It's disorganised, it's unclear and it's really a shambles. And we have to make the best of that. And therefore I think the strategic view is the most important point to take. The first thing that I want to emphasise is that we must make a decision that is the best for all Devon residents. We have to think about our own communities, that is absolutely crucial. The second thing I think which is important about the nine one one proposal is that it could be considered to be progressive in a good way. The idea of bringing forward neighbourhood area committees, which may cover a whole range of new areas, is I think one to be welcomed. We've heard a lot of evidence about adult health and social care and childcare. And clearly those recent improvements must be built on. We can't have those wrecked by another type of organisation. We've also heard clear evidence that there are going to be greater opportunities for financial and operational efficiency. That's very, very important. And I think the other one, which has not been mentioned, that nine one one allows us is to make certain that our environment, which is so important not only to our residents, but also to our economy in Devon, that our environment is better protected by nine one one than perhaps by some of the other ideas. Some of the other arrangements could be considered to be divisive, in my view, or unfair. I think they are retrograde in their movement. And they certainly will be putting key services at risk. I think there's no doubt about that at all. And I also think that some of the proposals, there will be environmental concerns which will be raised and ignored, basically. So the environment will be put at risk by other proposals. So I'm therefore very pleased to support the motion, the recommendation for nine one one. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Hookway. So we are now going to be debating, I have a number of people already on the list. Please do put your hands up to make your contributions. Thank you, councillor Magoff. But we're going to start off with councillor Neil Stephens. Over to you, councillor Stephens.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and I support councillor Brazil and his comments, thank you for that. And I will say Reform are listening. And I would like to thank all the officers for all their time. As I said before, I'm relaying this message from councillor Michael Fithcock as his deputy leader, so I'm going to share his thoughts, no incoming, please. In truth, whatever is said around the table today has little real influence. Even though in the Cabinet, who believe they are shaping the decision ultimately are not. The final outcome will be determined by central government. And based on recent experience, I hold little hope that this decision will reflect their relevance or common sense. From my perspective, LGR has already achieved what the government intended, to distract councils, communities from the real pressing problems faced by our residents. It is once again smoke and mirrors. We are mandated to deliver services that we no longer have the resources to fund. And government refuses to properly finance the very duties it requires of us. Their solution appears to be simple: keep us divided, push up towards selling our assets, encourage further borrowing, and when that fails, force us to dig deeper into the pockets of residents who can't least afford it. LGR has unfortunately brought out the worst in many of us. It has created division between councils, between communities and even between colleagues. As each tries to protect its own survival, reorganisation is meant to improve outcome. Yet across the country, councils are being pushed into abandoned systems that may be imperfect but functional, in favour of new structures that are untested and unproven. So where does it leave us? We are presented with a menu of options and none of them are without concern. But nothing worries me more than the press prospect of Exeter, Plymouth and Torbay forming an alliance that would deepen division. Benefit in some areas while leaving many others, especially rural communities, worse off. That is not in the best interest of Devon or its people. Given the choice between us, the only option I believe offers is fairness is the proposal of New Devon. Like many of you, I do not have a vote in this matter. But now that we must make a decision, it must choose, it is New Devon. Though if it was realistically possible, saying no to all proposals would be a preference. Unfortunately, we all know that is not an option. And I would just like to relay thank you from councillor Michael Fithcock for letting him send that message. Appreciate it, thank you.
Councillor, thank you very much, councillor Stephens. And if, of course, you've got something you would like to contribute from yourself, you are, of course, very welcome, but I would ask you to draw, to catch my eye and I will put you in order.
There's nothing more to add because I've said, and this is supported by Reform. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Next, I have got councillor Hayward and I have a few others, but please do try and catch my eye or councillor Dawson's and we'll try and take you in order, okay? Councillor Hayward.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I've run it clear, a lot of what I was going to say has been covered by councillor Stephens and the leader of the Reform group. I don't share a lot of what they believe, but on this, I think actually it's a unified position. I've got a great many friends and colleagues in this chamber and it has been divisive. You know, this has been voiceded, to take councillor Brazil's point, by a government that seems oblivious to actually what British people need, what we want and the strife and the struggles we're going through to essentially ask us to do a pointless exercise. The Minister of State has already admitted it won't save any money. So what's the point? It's an ideological war on local government and local people and services. I'm sure no one on my left voted for it. I'm pretty sure no one on my right voted for it. Because it's a metropolitan mindset. It works in an urban area, it might work in Greater Manchester, Birmingham, Sheffield, London. Doesn't work in rural places, so it's flawed from the first outset. But this is where we are, that we've now ended up in like a Hunger Games between councils, councils fighting each other. And from the county council, all the way down to town and parish councils, and I represent all three of them, we've had, wasted an entire year messing around, prepping, officer time, staff resource, focus directed elsewhere, when we could have been delivering services, but we haven't. Our eye, to take my colleague's point, has been taken off the ball, smoke and mirrors. And that's not good for our residents because ultimately we're only here for them. Everything we do is for residents, whether they're children in care, children in need, children who need educational support, adult social care, or just the other million people in Devon, who we are fortunate enough to be elected to represent. But as I point out, this is where we are. However, I believe the plan that's in front of you is fundamentally flawed because this council, these councillors here today, you haven't seen the other plans. You're essentially, and this is a flaw of the process, someone always has to meet first. And you are considering this plan, this is our job, is to look at this plan. I haven't seen the other plans, even within my own district council, they haven't been released yet. When they are, I can consider that. And I'm equally fine that plan flawed, but I'll do it on a case by case basis. What I find unfortunate with this plan is that it's contradictory. Aside from the fact that some of the numbers don't add up, and that will be addressed, as was pointed out, on one hand it says that some communities, Plymouth and Torbay are unique, but Exeter isn't. Now, I don't live in Exeter, but I'd consider Exeter fairly unique. I don't support what they're proposed to do because, as has been mentioned, it creates another, a fourth Devon that will be impoverished, that will have no economic drivers, that will simply be bereft of everything other than the need that will exist. But Exeter is unique, it has a space, it has a history. The report says that smaller councils can do things better. There's a report from the DCN, which is also, has independent experts, LG Inform, that contradicts pretty much everything that's in your report. Now, that's what the DCN say, the CCN will say something else. It comes back to everyone is fighting each other to prove a point that really doesn't need to be made. But where it comes to, for me, is the financials. Yes, I take the point from the Director of Finance and my colleague in front, councillor Richardson, alluded to it. Over ten years, this council is going to likely spend, with the consolidated spend and expenditure of the districts, about thirty two billion, if you extrapolate it with five percent increases year on year on year. And yet the best we can hope for is two hundred and twenty four million in saving? That's point seven percent of that entire budget. You know, one might be flippant and say, just change the toilet roll in the toilets, stop giving out free lunches and coffee, you can save money that way. The report talks about, oh, we can cut down on councillors allowances, that's just frippery. That is such small issues in the scheme of things. So a lot of the finances for me don't stack up. But for me, ultimately, it comes down to democracy. You know, the people of Devon elect us and whatever rosette we choose to wear, and I'm one of only two true independents in this chamber, so I don't have a party behind me, I have people behind me. This chamber, this body that we exist, to paraphrase Abraham Lincoln, we exist for the people, of the people, by the people, not for a party. We exist to serve the people. And as councillor Bailey pointed out, we are becoming an outlier. We will have far more electorate or population, whichever figure you choose, than any other unitary. We are a huge rural county. So you couple those things together. Take, for example, Axminster, we currently have, in my particular division, we have seven councillors performing all the roles that this new Devon wishes to take on. So that's seven councillors and you're going to condense that into one. Essentially with a part-time allowance, you won't be able to have genuine public community champions, it will be party acolytes. It will be people who don't need to work, people who are fortunate to have trust funds, fortunate to have directorships, fortunate enough to be landlords. But working people, people with care obligations, people looking after people will simply be priced out of the market, they won't be able to participate in the democratic process. And that's just not right. Neighbourhood area committees, they're a fallacy, it's an illusion of democracy. The report touches on it numerous times, if appropriate, when appropriate, when resources allow. You're just pretending, you know, the constituent size of NACs is fifty thousand. That's bigger than some of the districts. So you are taking an entire district democracy and cramming it into a committee that may or may not allow some people to speak, that may have representation from towns and parishes, it probably won't be voting rights, but you'll be allowed to participate, come along and say your piece. It's an illusion of democracy and that for me is abhorrent. Now, that's not Devon's fault, Devon's played the, you know, you've played the hand of the cards you were given. But it doesn't detract from the fact that this is fundamentally flawed. Now, what I have noticed is from this report, and I converted the PDF into a Word document, fling the Word document through a programme, and within the whole document, there's no reference to cooperation. It's not mentioned once. The word collaborate comes up three times, but it's fairly, you know, it just is used as a buzzword. Collegiate, nothing. So if you had two separate authorities, four separate authorities, where's the impetus to cooperate? You all want the same thing, you're all delivering the same You all want the same thing, you're all delivering the same services. You all want to provide the very best for the people we serve and represent, but this report doesn't mention it, doesn't mention cooperation once. Local authorities can cooperate, they can create conjoined unified organisations to deliver the very services that you want to deliver, that you claim to deliver.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, you're getting towards the end of your time, if you could give us, thank you.
I am, thank you.
If you'd just like to make a few, have you got a few more comments to?
Well, it's just, just to sum up, Chair, there is a democratic deficit in what's being proposed. Devon is too big, it's too disparate, it's too remote to cram everything into one authority, and I genuinely do not believe, and I'm sad to say this, but I've watched this council for 15 years, I don't believe this council is capable of governing with all of those extra services and duties in one authority. I don't believe, and I certainly don't believe this is the building and this complex is the one that you need to do it in. But no one's thought about that previously, so there we are. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hayward. So I'm going to move on to councillor Rogers, please. I'm sorry, I can't hear you, councillor Rogers.
I'm not ready to ask questions, yes, sorry. I'm waiting for the rest of the debate. I didn't, the financial debate I did, but the technical, I need to listen more to the debate.
So hang on a sec.
Just, you had your hand up earlier, you wanted to make a statement about MPs in the technical bit, so I put you on the list. So if you want to come off and go on later, that's fine.
If you could, thank you.
Thank you. In which case, we'll move on to councillor Tillsley, please. And sorry, before you start, councillor Tillsley, we're now going to start using the clock, and so you should be able to see it up there. So keep an eye on it, because otherwise we could be here for an awfully long time. Which is no problem, but, and maybe we need a break, but we're just trying to make sure we focus our thoughts to make our points in a succinct and effective way. Okay, councillor Tillsley.
Thank you very much, Chair. As someone who works in a school in Devon, in a very, very rural school, with a catchment area larger than Birmingham, we currently work across three district councils, trying to help young people who are in terrible situations with their school transport, with their special educational needs. Things that are currently delivered by this council is hard enough. Trying to work with young people around things like housing, which is a district responsibility, is even harder. Any proposal that suggests that our children are looked after by one authority has my support. Anything that makes that whole process simpler and more streamlined absolutely has my support. I don't need the full five minutes, thank you very much, it will just be. Looking after children, the only way that I can see that will work is by working with fewer borders and not dividing up catchment areas between smaller unitaries. We need one building to help look after children more effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tillsley. Can I call on councillor Connet, next, please?
Thank you, Chairman. It's been my privilege to give probably half of my life about to being a councillor, and the people I met, the babies I met back in 1995 are in canvassing, and just to reassure you, none were kissed. They've grown up, they are now in their 30s with children of their own. And I think to myself, over those years, what would their aspirations be, what would they want? And we have, for the first time in 50 years, this golden opportunity to reshape councils and to recreate local government, ending the confusion about what district, city, borough and county councils do, and that is to be very much welcomed. To that extent, I join with the leader of the council in his concerns about the future of local government and the fact that it's being foisted upon us. We hadn't wanted it, but it is here, and it is our duty to make the best of it. So alongside those issues, we want a future in which our communities have real voice, real agency, and to be served by a council which, starting afresh, will work with communities and in partnership. And the old days of County Hill knows best are gone, and I think we should all pay heed to the words of councillor Hayward about the culture in this place over nearly two decades. And it's not something that we should be taking forward, if indeed we are fortunate enough to be a councillor of the future. It's clear a great deal of work has gone into the county's bid to become a single Devon unitary, and I add my own thanks to the officers for that work, and I anticipate the proverbial oil lamps were burning many bright and long. But to my reading, through the case that's proposed for New Devon, is, when you read it, a little bit project fear, a little bit Devon does it already, a little bit will be cheaper, summarised in a mission about creating a modern, financially secure and efficient council that is simpler, stronger and more local. And I ask myself, and we should all ask ourselves, what is a noble cause, what is our unique selling point? Our vision has to be something more than simply being the least worst option. If only children, as important as they are to every one of us, is your issue, then we need to think more broadly. It's about economic development, it's about how our children go up, it's about our communities, it is about so much more. It's about how we achieve integrated transport, it's about so much more. Children are important, but everyone so far is hanging that on the hook as the reason for New Devon. In my view, it denigrates the staff, who may well find themselves working in other organisations if the government selects something other than a single Devon unitary. And I don't think we should be disrespectful to the staff who may move from Devon County Council to a new council. If they're brilliant when they're working for us, they'll be brilliant when they're working for someone else, and let's not forget it. The plans for 16 neighbourhood area committees are, I suggest, oversold, they await national legislative change, and again, I add my words, my support to the words of councillor Hayward. But the proposal for charter trustees for Exeter is, in my view, disappointing. Charter trustees would look after the Lord Mayor, to in civic regalia, they have no decision-making powers, not even that of a town or parish council. But they can raise council tax, and for comparison, if you look at the charter trustees in Bath, probably our most comparable city, their precept is £269,000. Imagine that in Exeter, and they couldn't even be consulted on a planning application. The smallest parish council in Devon has the right, has the legal right to be consulted on a planning application, but in Exeter, of 140,000 people, no one, but no one has the right to be consulted on a garden shed application in someone's back garden. Does that strike us as right and proper? So under this proposal, Exeter, an historic city, will be left out, and that is wrong. So, Chairman, I simply want to say this, I hope the Cabinet, when it meets on Tuesday, will take these things seriously and look at what more it can do, because if we're supporting this today, we're effectively signing Exeter's death warrant as an independent, self-governing city, and I don't think we really want to be doing that as a county council. For me, whatever decision the Secretary of State makes about future arrangements of councils in Devon, I will work to ensure their smooth transition. However, personally, I'm not yet persuaded this option before us today best serves Devon. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Connet. Moving on to councillor McGough, please.
Thank you very much. Those councillors in the last administration, last council, you, I went against the officers on Devon County Council, because I thought it was inefficient, the way you run things. I didn't think it was good enough. The reason being, it's not good enough, I've later come to find out, because I've obviously done my little bit of due diligence, looking through, is frustration, and the frustration at the time was my own Conservative government. I called them out the help for the lack of finances for local government. It didn't come from my Conservative government, the hands were tied by the officers, so I will give the senior officer an apology for that time, because it's frustration, because the way you're running things at the time, to me, it wasn't efficient for my residents of Devon. That is my own personal opinion, and, you know, the residents come first, and that's so frustrating for me, the lack of investment into our areas, but is lack of investment because you don't have the money to do it? And we're in the same position now. To the Lib Dem colleagues in the chamber, I call you colleagues, we're colleagues here, I don't vote for the LGR, I'm against it, not against Lib Dems, it's nothing, you don't really see politics, it's not political against you, okay? I don't vote for it one bit. I'm a Devon boy, one of the proudest moments of my life, apart from the birth of my son, was when I represented Devon at rugby, okay? Born and bred Devon. Devon will lose its identity if we go with the 911. Any model we choose is going to lose its identity to Devon. We've all seen in the past year the inefficiency, again, between working collaborative together. We're not doing it, because we're all down each other's necks at the moment, and it's absolutely disgraceful that we're doing it. The emails we see, the chains, I'm not going to say the content, the public don't need the content. We need to stop it, we really need to stop this, and come together, work together, get the best outcome for Devon. My opinion, the LGR is not the best outcome for Devon. And this is straight to Labour, absolutely disgraceful, to take away local representation for our areas. I'm a local representative, I'm like Marmite, you can love me or hate me, I don't care about that, I'm here to do the right thing. And this choosing any model here today would not be the right thing to do for the residents of my area, Northern Division. We are the poor relations to Devon as it is. It's always been exeter-centric. North Devon exists, Torridge exists. We need money and finance to back our ends, it can only come from central government. Now, if you go around the area, if you run the chambers now, run the offices, the morale of the staff, in my own personal opinion, is very, very low. It should be really low, unfortunately, because it's so uncertain whether you're going to keep your jobs or not. And this echoes right across the districts and the parishes as well. We've got some great staff, reign everywhere. Let's support the staff, you know, I'm totally against it, you know, far as I'm concerned, Labour, keep your nose out of Devon. Really do. It's the only way to try and push us into Devon at the moment, is either being Conservative-run or Liberal Democrat-run historically over the years. It's a great way to push in, to try and push us out. Devon exists as its own entity, it's a Devonshire, it's a Shire County, you know, let's be proud of the Shire County. I got the Old Devonshire Voice, I'm bloody proud of it as well. The new council going forward would inherit the old debts. It's absolute madness. If you start a new business, you don't inherit old debts from a previous business. You then can't become efficient going forward, you can't deliver what you say we deliver in the papers, because we've got huge debt over our heads. And that's not political, I don't care, the debts exist, and the debts will be paid off. One gentleman touched on about the food banks there, you know, the poorer in society, well, I come from the poorer in society. I've worked bloody hard to get myself where I am today. I've had my ups and downs, I've been no angel in my life, ups and downs. We need to support the vulnerable society, I don't think this actually delivers it. So my last little thing here, I'm a proud man. For every one in the chamber, God save the King, and most importantly, God save Devon, because we need saving.
Thank you, councillor McGough. Next, I'm going to councillor Bederman, please.
Thank you, Chair. I won't take up a lot of time, because I think I certainly associate myself with the comments of the leader and councillor Stevens through councillor Fyffe-Cook, councillor Hayward and Dermot, quite a bit of what you say. You know, we are where we are, and don't forget that, this is Labour doing to us. And it is a joke that they're talking about devolving powers and actually telling us how to do it. So I think that's the bit that keeps my head. For me, the technical questions really, Angie Sinclair's answer to a technical question brings it home to me, and it certainly reflects my award. You know, I've got a population that I represent, and it's actually the smallest part of that population that takes up the most of my time, and it's not necessarily the most vulnerable. So when you talk about population, it doesn't necessarily relate to workload. Your workload will go where the population calls you, but actually where you probably need to be is where those vulnerable people are that don't know how to have a voice, and I think that is where we add value as councillors, and should add value. We represent those people. So I think, you know, it does worry me, I mean, I'm a passionate Devonian like Dermot, I'm a passionate North Devonian. We've got brilliant officers in all areas of our counties, I'm sure, who live, breathe and understand the areas they work in. And I think that's the biggest loss with whatever, because I'm sure government know already what they're going to do to us. We're all spending all this airtime, but the government know what they're going to do to us, whatever we say today, whatever our districts say in the weeks to come, they know what they're going to do to us. So I think the biggest worry for me is that loss of real local, you know, those local people that work in our district councils, in our parish and town councils, you know, the city council, as Alan pointed out, they've got a real feel for their area, and whatever we do as a 911, you will lose a bit of that. But at the same time, we're absolutely right, probably financially, and to be able to deliver services to the actual most vulnerable people, it probably works better as a bigger organisation with especially children's services and adult social care, that buy-in power. So it's a real tear, and that's why probably I think our districts will have come up what they believe is best for the district. I think our council have come up what they feel is best for the county. And at the moment, I can vote, I personally think I can vote for both, because I can see the merits in both. I can see it from that importance of keeping local voice, and I can see it from the importance of, ultimately, the most, the worst thing that can happen to us is a child becomes harmed, isn't it? That, not, there's nobody in this chamber that wants to see a young person come harmed, because, you know, in North, particularly, I'm bound to talk about North and East Devon, it was said, you know, we've got a much more rural area, we've got very, a lot less people, but we've got the most vulnerable people. You think of Ilford, Kilmessentral, you think of Barnstable, you think of parts of Biddiford, you know, real pockets of deprivation where people really need help. And I fear if we go down, you know, the more models we have, you know, the less impact we're going to have in those real deprived areas. So I don't know if I've helped in the debate, but I personally will be supporting this. But I think at this stage, I'll also support the other models, because I think the government needs to understand, and I hope that the Cabinet will, and I'm sure they will, caveat this, this is our opinion, because you are doing it to us. This is not our opinion, you think it's a good idea, and I think that cannot go back strong enough. And my recommendation, certainly to Labour, would go and sort the real problems out. And I'll finish on the Surrey, I think the Surrey thing is really how we've all faced the last decades, isn't it? Whatever the colour of the government running the day, if you're not inside the M25 corridor, you don't matter. Surrey can make bad decisions, terrible decisions, and they get bailed out. The rest of us have been just trying to keep children alive and well-resourced, and we have to pay back the debt. Incredible, really. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Bederman. May I ask councillor Bell for your contribution, please?
Thank you, Chair. Unlike councillor McGough and councillor Bederman, I am a resident of Devon, and I am proud to represent Devon. But of course, I do come from Margate in Kent, so I'm more likely to speak, as people have noted recently, like the leader of Kent County Council, and I can mix my words. So I've written down what I'm going to say today. My colleagues, Northern Devon, will hopefully recognise I do have a passion for housing, as well as a strong belief that with dedicated governments, we could eradicate homelessness and housing insecurity in the same way that good governments have been part of the eradication of horrors like polio and slavery in the past. From a housing and homelessness perspective, within this 341-page document, the word housing appears 250 times, homelessness almost 50 times. Words are a facile measure of efficiency or meaning, but Bronton does appear zero times. Currently, we have councils, district councils and the county council across Devon dedicated to housing issues. And in North Devon, we've won awards for the work being done in addressing homelessness and other issues. We are doing as well as we can, given the budgets. But as I read this document, I can see the LGR gives us the opportunity to do even better. And we must note, when asked to rank their priorities, residents identified affordable housing as their number one priority, more so even than potholes. The large single unitary addresses the fragmented nature of having so many authorities, as councillor Tillsley alluded to, running so many services, putting children's services, adult services, mental health services, homeless prevention under a single coherent system will allow the county under a single coherent system will allow the county to achieve the single interconnected system that all of us want and our residents deserve, even the belowins like myself. Unitary authorities are a method that can improve housing security for the most vulnerable members of our community. However, unity, homogeny, brings risks of its own. Here today, I see a well-balanced chamber who are wholly dedicated to the wellbeing of Devonians. Despite our differences, I have great faith in every member of this council. However, it is not long ago that efficiency measures forced by Devon County Council remove vital and much-loved, valued mental health centres from Ilfracombe, Barnstable, Holsworthy and Biddeford, moves that were heavily criticised and, because of the hard work by many councillors, delayed by the Northern Devon councils. The moves in this document promote localities, fantastic, that respect the geographical and cultural vastness of Devon and very, very welcome and will help to ensure local accountability across every part of the county. However, while currently the amalgamation of districts and county requires nationwide deliberation, careful consultation, informed discourse, the structure we are proposing here today will be maintained solely at the pleasure of the councillors who succeed us. We are currently a council where several districts ring-fence spending on temporary accommodation and reflect strongly on the needs of people in housing and security. The checks and balances that our concrete district councils bring to the mix ensure balance. We face a possibility that future councils will enjoy a monopoly on choice and could make unilateral choices for financial or other reasons that will go unchallenged in the way they are today. I hope when the Cabinet comes to reflect and debate what we've discussed today, they will consider strongly that we are going to lose some of the safeguards that we currently enjoy. I really appreciate, and I think this is a fantastic model, but I think we do have to be careful. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Bell. So, moving on to councillor Gent, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to support the proposal that's been tabled and I do hope that Cabinet, I hope Cabinet will accept it. I think I'm the first speaker, as far as I've been able to understand from the debate so far, that can see any advantages at all in LGR and creating a unitary authority. But I do actually see an advantage in a unitary authority and the reason I see that advantage is it brings planning into the same authority as the delivery services. And I've come to this point of view during the course of time representing the new town of Cranbrook and the other new developments, Westcliff and Tidebarn. Most of the people I represent live in new houses where the infrastructure has been developed by complex planning agreements, planning obligations, some of which are 10 years old or more, but have to be played out over the course of a long period of time. And that's the inevitable nature of a place-making process, where the planning authority and the delivery authorities have to work together over a long period of time for a series of complex agreements. And I can see an advantage in the planning authority being in the same organisation as the delivery. Most of the planning obligations relate to services that can be delivered by currently Devon County Council, like new schools, but most of the money is being collected and organised through a community infrastructure levy organised by the local planning authority, in this case, East Devon. And both authorities understandably protect their budget and work carefully in the best interests for their own authority. And that is not in any way to criticise the officers or their desire to work together, but I do see advantages in having a unitary authority for the development of new developments. But I believe that that generalisation is probably also true for any planning decision. So I can see some advantages in being a unitary. I can see advantages of creating a unitary with natural boundaries. Devon has coastlines. District and parish council boundaries can be arbitrary lines on the map. The proposals which use those arbitrary lines to carve up Devon, to carve up services, are a recipe for extra work and extra costs, as set out in the financial assessments that have been tabled. I think our residents would like us to keep the natural and customary boundaries of Devon. Exeter is important, not just to Devon, but to the entire West Country. Arguably, it's the most important city on the peninsula, with the possible exception of Plymouth, which is already a unitary. But Plymouth isn't really a place you go through to get anywhere, except to go by on a boat. All roads lead to Exeter. The Exeter area has problems, challenges and potential on a scale and of a nature unlike anywhere else in DCC. All this means that a planning and place-making service, taking into account the wider, greater Exeter area, is absolutely essential and it's currently lacking. As I think we all know, there was an abortive Greater Exeter planning exercise which failed for understandable reasons, but it's absolutely important that it does go forward. And does this mean that Greater Exeter should be a separate unitary? Well, not in my opinion. I think the counter-argument for me is more weighty. We would end up with an arbitrary line slicing through the hinterland, which would cut off access to services, for all the reasons that have been set out in this report, which I think are very cogent. I welcome, all right, and I want to change the subject and talk about a couple of things which haven't been mentioned, which is the Pension Fund and the County Farms Estate. I welcome that the proposal considers the future of these. All the other options would endanger the County Farms Estate by breaking it up into smaller units, which could not sustain the specialised expertise which currently manages the starter farms and aligns the farms with the broader objectives of the council. The £6 billion Pension Fund has some 100,000 members and the future of that is important. Whatever happens, the fund will probably continue to be one fund for the whole of Devon, but the decision as to which successor authority would be the administering authority is not, as far as I know, addressed by any of the other proposals. And that's a flaw and a potential area of risk for 100,000 fund members. I think the safest option for the fund is the proposal that is tabled. Overall, the cost savings from replacing the current two-tier system with one unitary do seem to align with common sense. Carving up the current service area of DCC will only create costs. I support the proposal that's before us on the table today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gent. So next I have councillor Arnott. And for any of you who have not yet spoken, please, you know, do try to catch our eye. We'd very much like to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to have their say. Thank you. Councillor Arnott.
Thank you, Chair. I'll do this bit sitting down and then standing up. I speak today as a councillor who also serves on East Devon District Council and I'm mindful of the responsibilities that come with this dual role. That will be the time that the screen turns off, isn't it? I've declared my interest in accordance with the Code of Conduct and have received a dispensation to participate in this debate. I understand that this dispensation relates solely to the management of interests and does not override the legal requirement to avoid bias or predetermination. That said, Chair, I'm not offering an opinion here, I just want to address some of the points that have been made, as helpfully as possible, because obviously I have a certain small area of knowledge on this. So, my great friend councillor Hayward and councillor Connet both referred to the neighbourhood area committees. I think councillor Connet described them as oversold and Paulie described them as abhorrent and I do understand where you're coming from. Nevertheless, the Minister of State, Jim McMahon, said in June this year, "We must work to create these things." And so we have done that piece of work. They will of course evolve and as I said earlier, we don't even understand the legislation that underpins them yet. But the idea I would put to both councillors is that if you have one large unitary, two large unitaries, four, wherever it goes, the districts have gone. And so, if you do not have the neighbourhood area committees, you have a whopping great unitary up there and you have a parish council down there. And the prospect for the lack of communication is even worse than it is now. So I think it is worth working on this, but it has been very useful to hear views on it. And of course, as an administration, we would want to hear a lot more from all councillors as we move forward. And of course, there's a consultation process that begins in the new year. Just two other things, Chair. With regard to Exeter, I mean, Exeter has to an extent itself promoted through the leader, a sort of stab in the back myth that it hasn't been consulted around this, that I can say from the point of view of the Devon District Forum, that is not the case. Exeter has plenty of chance through Team Devon and the Devon District Forum to become more involved in this process. But again, it isn't really for our officers to put forward the definitive idea for how Exeter should be run afterwards. As a point of information, I can tell you, I suggested one year ago to the leader and chief exec of Exeter that they may wish to start looking into how they may perish their city. Maybe they've done work on that, maybe not, I don't know. But in defence of this council, I don't think we've understood what Exeter actually is because the map has been constantly redrawn. I think they've finished drawing it, but I'm not quite sure. So it hasn't been easy to address them in particular. But moving forward, which is the spirit in the chamber, I think, of course, we would want to work closely and supportively with Exeter moving forward. And I really don't see any justification in this report for the tone of what was said by one councillor earlier about Exeter being let down or left out. I can't see that at all. But finally, Chair, and this is the point I would really want to make because it goes to councillor Gent's excellent points, councillor Bell's as well. We are meant to be getting, we are doing this because in the Labour manifesto, they required the entirety of England to form mayoral strategic authorities, okay? We're doing our best here, all of us, to answer the exam questions that have been put to us. But if we do not get a mayoral strategic authority and we understand that our neighbours, Somerset, Dorset, Wiltshire, may not be getting one in this parliament, that poor old Surrey, who've had their debt slightly paid off, they're not getting one till 2031. If we don't get one for Devon as soon as possible, then I would expect the leader and myself and others to come back to this place at some time in the new year and say, shouldn't we be challenging government on this? Why are we being putting, why are we absolutely smashing up an entire Devon democratic system when the key point was to get a mayoral authority, going to points made behind me and over there around economy? The mayoral authority could have a serious role in strategic planning, in economy, in education, in NHS and all the rest of it. What are we to do in Devon? Just sit on our hands and go, well, you know, give it to us government when you fancy it? No. This council will need to push hard for a mayoral devolution, for a mayoral strategic authority as fast as possible in the new year. And I think probably, Chair, the debate here will move on to that and I suspect as early as December, when we have submitted our homework. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Arnott. Could I move next to councillor Raik, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to preface this by saying that I absolutely think that this report should go forward to the Secretary of State. It's a serious piece of work and worthy of his consideration. So, does that mean I support it? Not yet, in terms of do I think it's the best possible solution? No. And I would echo councillor Hayward's words that it is both flawed and contradictory, as all the submissions the Secretary of State is likely to receive will be, almost by design. To elaborate slightly on the contradictions that councillor Hayward has identified, one is that, we can see you walking out. One is that we're charged with making a proposal for the entire ceremonial county of Devon and we're told that big is beautiful and we need the size of the one Devon to unleash opportunities of scale and the like. But at the same time, we're proposing a unitary Torbay, which will be tiny, is already too small to be an effective unitary and under this proposal won't grow any. So unless Torbay has some special source, it will be unable to access the supposed benefits of size. Councillor Connet mentioned the dread term Project Fear and we've all been having fun with our word counts. I'd point out that the word risk appears 300 times in this document, the word opportunity slightly under 199 indeed. And I think there is, I absolutely hear the case of the dangers of disaggregation, but I think that the opportunities and possibilities of forming smaller, more nimble teams, I see no evidence that they've been seriously considered. And with that, Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Raik. Next on my list is councillor Ledbetter.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I might have some Liberal Democrat tendencies because everything, I can't really disagree with anything that's been said and it just shows the problem we have here, that all these different plans have their merits. And as many people have said, at the end of the day, the government's going to make the decision. It may well have already made a decision on what's going to happen and, as I say, various merits to all the different schemes. But I have to agree with what the leader said, councillor Brazil, because at the end of the day, none of this addresses the structural issues that we're all encountering and that is that the fact that we're not getting enough money in local government. We have problems with SEND, we have a problem with children's services, we have all these pressing issues and this is very much like rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic and let's be get extra money. And as the leader says, we've been trying and lobbying for many years. I've been lobbying for educational extra money, SEND, F40 etc. And under all the administrations, including my own, they weren't listening to us. And we know that the government thinks that this country stops at Bristol and we are the forgotten South West. So, yeah, whatever we do, it doesn't actually address the fact that there is a lack of money coming into local government. I also want to agree with what councillor Connet said, not his comments about borrowing because there's a huge difference between 60 million and 600 million. However, I do agree with him about his comments about Exeter. At some point, that has to be addressed. If we have one Devon, they can't have no representation whatsoever. So as an Exeter resident and part Exeter council, I certainly say that needs to be issued. Other than that, as I say, all the different streams, ideas have different merits moving forward. And all I can do really is firstly thank all the officers and all the members who have been involved in getting to where we are. An awful lot of work has gone into this and as you say, it means you haven't been able to do other work, so there's another problem. And I wish the Cabinet Godspeed with their decision next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ledbetter. And last on my list currently is, I will add you to my list, the penultimate person on my list is councillor Richardson. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Many of the points I would have raised have already been raised by councillors from across the chamber, so I won't repeat them. But, you know, I think many of us in here are in agreement with our sentiment. So I'm just going to pick on one thing really, and that's the number of councillors. A proposal for 107 members. I will not be able to be a councillor unless you're a unitary. I'm someone who has to work full-time, you know, I'm not someone who has grown up in Devon. I'm very grateful to have been able to move to Devon and call this place home. I absolutely love this county and I feel a service to this county and that's why I wanted to become a councillor. But I know I won't be able to continue in this capacity with working a full-time job in a unitary with just 107 members and over 6,500 people to represent. The workload for a councillor is going to go through the roof. I know of councillors in councils which have gone through this process that... I know of councillors in councils which have gone through this process that have been sacked from their jobs because of the workload. Essentially, you're asking councillors to become mini MPs without the resources, without the staff and I honestly think that will cut out most people who would like to be part of the democratic process, who would like to put themselves forward to represent people. And you know, every single person in this room shares that same vision and values for representing their people in Devon. But this idea of cutting down to 107 members on an allowance of, well, maybe 16, 17,000 pounds, it's just not going to work for normal working people who want to become councillors and who want to represent their people. So my ask of Cabinet would be to review this idea because there will be a democratic deficit. I will not be able to be a councillor anymore if this proposal is passed and that depresses me because I absolutely love serving my residence and to think this might go away for me is completely depressing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Richardson. I thought you were last councillor Wainwright, but you're not.
Thank you Chair.
Over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to share my ambition and optimism about neighbourhood area committees. I heard this morning that neighbourhood area committees could be an opportunity for parish and town councils to actually have a voice at what will become the highest tier of local government. That's very different from the views that they have now about their roles. Neighbourhood area committees appear in both the 911 and the 145 options and in spite of the Dalc online consultation with parish and town councils, with respect, there were not 460 people at that meeting. I think that many of the parish and town councils might actually have general powers of competence that might give them more fiscal flexibility that they're not currently using. Some of them don't even know about it. I'd like to share with other county councillors here that as councillor for Selcombe Division, I will actually be bringing all 16 of my parishes together to a parish meeting on the 29th of November to discuss what parish and town councils think about what they're, how they can be best represented at the neighbourhood area committees. And I would urge any parish and town councillors who happen to be listening to this debate to do the same. I'd like to thank councillor Paul Arnott who has agreed to address this parish assembly as a first stage. And I'd actually like to join with other councillors to thank those officers who have spent so much time and energy exploring where our best interests lie and I commend neighbourhood area committees to all who are listening. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wainwright. So last but not least, unless anybody else? I keep getting one extra added. I thought you were the very last councillor Rogers, but I'm going to come back to you now to the matter you raised earlier, so.
Thank you. I welcome the hate, not, the debate not hate method that we've observed in the chamber today. I hope you all enjoyed your foxes as sweet at no cost to the taxpayer. The question for me is we are being forced to make decisions that aren't right. We're a metro, we're not a metropolitan community, but these decisions are being forced. We're blessed to have two national parks in Devon, but if you're a national park authority, you're a planning authority and there's no magic money tree with this proposal, one that I've seen anyway. And we must forget the most vulnerable people in society, which I feel I'll be forgetting. This proposal doesn't come with money. This proposal doesn't come with certainty of how are you going to manage 417 town and parish councils and this proposal doesn't come with solutions, it comes with more problems than solutions. I thank councillor Brazil for his inclusion in the chamber. I hope you can redress that and send a clear message to the Devon MPs that Devon is having this done to them, not partly being told, not engaged.
Thank you councillor Rogers. And I think last, I think, is councillor Hodgson.
Thank you. I didn't intend to be last. Can you hear me? Yeah, I see. Thank you. No, I didn't intend to be last. I just really wanted to say how useful it's been, actually because obviously because part of the Cabinet next week, it's been really good to have really sort of considered points made for, made on this. I know as the Cabinet, we've had an awful lot of meetings and discussions, so there's a lot of familiarity. But that said, I think that the document that's emerged from, that's emerged that we're looking at today, I think has given a lot more detail and I think that's really helpful and I thank the officers for that. But I also recognise the thanks to go to Paul as well, I know the poor man, he picked up the short straw there a few months ago and I think to do what's been done in the last few months is extremely, absolutely extraordinary. But I'm furious with the government, I'm furious with the government, what they're doing to us. I mean, we've been so messed around as local authorities with delivering public services and it's not just us, it's the NHS and all the rest of it too. And I just hope that, okay, so we will oblige, we will send forward and I hope we get a decent response from the government. But I do think that we need to push more to put, you know, after we've had the decision next year, that we can put more flesh on the situation so we can really understand it better because I think there's a lot of sort of gaps really in areas around the neighbourhood area committees, if that's what ends up being, if this one is the one that's selected. But the other thing, I think we need to get to the boundaries commission and I think they need a bit of a shake up too quick to be honest, because it seems to me that, you know, I have been, in part of the local authorities have been through the boundaries commission's reviews previously two or three times and there's no, I don't think there's consistency and they're supposed to be delivering consistency. And I think this is part of the concern that's emerging today about how, you know, how can we sort of be okay to cover such high numbers of electorate and public for an individual? Because it's undermining democracy and I think that's a real concern to be had. So I think there's work to be done to say the least, but I think it's really useful what we've heard today and I think that, you know, it's never going to be easy to come up with a, you know, which side of the fence to fall on when you sit on more than one local authority. And I'll hold my powder dry till next Tuesday to say further on that, but I just think it's been really useful to have all these, you know, considered views. Thank you very much everybody.
Thank you councillor Hodgson. So I have nobody on my list, just to make sure that everybody has had a chance to speak. I'm just going to do the last sweep of the room. Please indicate if you would like to say anything further. Nope, in which case I will be moving, whoops, back to councillor Brazil to, as mover of the original motion.
Chair, just a point of order, some of us haven't spoken who are twin hatters, can I assume that dispensation still applies?
I'm going to ask head of legal services to respond to that one. Thank you councillor Keeble.
Yes, I gave a general dispensation to everybody.
Thank you.
Always best to check these things though, thank you. So returning to this, councillor Brazil was mover of the original motion, would you like to speak in response to the debate and the questions that we've heard here today? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, yeah, just to thank everyone for their participation and engagement. It's been, it's been welcome and particularly resonant, particularly resonated Thomas, councillor Richardson I should say, you know, and I think that's something we will definitely be looking at Cabinet on Tuesday. We need to, we need, we probably haven't got that quite right and so thank you for you raising it, but I think others as well, Jess and councillor Bailey and councillor Hodgson. Just also, thank you, Neil's gone, councillor Stevens, councillor Stevens is gone, but reading out that statement from councillor Five Cook, you know, that's very good to see that we are all want to work together to get what's best for Devon. And although we may disagree about how that, I think that the sentiments there are exactly the same and that's, and that's really positive and thank you councillor Ledbetter as well for your support. Just finally, just on the point that councillor Gent raised about unitary, you know what, people who know me, that I've always been in favour of unitary councils because I see it as a better and more efficient way of doing business, council business. It's just the way that we're being forced to do it is the problem. So it's not that I'm against it and I can see the advantages of it, absolutely, but I just genuinely feel that this government is so out of touch with rural areas and the cities involved as well, that it just does not know how best to do it. We could have evolved into a much better place than we are being forced to do at the moment and so that is my concerns. And just on that final bit, just to say, I think there is a general consensus here is that none of us are happy about how we are being pushed and pulled and forced to do this by central government and it's, as I said, the irony of devolution is not really lost on me. If that's what they think devolution is, well, yeah, you know, I was going to say, don't bring it on is what I say. Anyway, thank, and finally, thank you all very much.
Thank you councillor Brazil. So we're nearly there, we're nearly there. So before we go to the vote and on the recommendations of the report which you will have in front of you, which are in essence to note the processes associated with local government reorganisation and all the way in which the council will have worked towards this and the consideration that will go forward. I have taken the decision and as has councillor Dawson, that in line with the neutrality of the roles that we hold at council, that we will not be voting in this vote and if by any chance there is a 50 50 split, we will not be exercising, I will not be exercising the casting vote. This is not a decision making vote, it is an indicative vote for, to move the, basically to move the report to Cabinet for consideration and I note the earlier conversations about the assurances that have been given, that the comments and questions have been, will be considered by Cabinet, not merely noted. So, sorry, forgive me, I see councillor Hayward has a question or a point?
Thank you Chair. It's purely a procedural one. I quite recognise your decision to recuse yourself from the vote, but I understand that the legal duty of the presiding chair is to vote if called upon because effectively if there was a split, there wouldn't be a decision, it would, it simply would fail because there's the same number of people voting for possibly or against. Therefore, I would perhaps ask our monitoring officer just to confirm that legal position because certainly that's different to my interpretation as a proper officer of a council. That's the only duty of a chair, as unpleasant as it might be, is you have to exercise that casting vote, but I'd welcome to hear constitutionally what Maria thinks.
Thank you councillor Hayward for actually seeking clarification for that. I will ask the monitoring officer, my personal view is that this is not a decision of the council other than to refer a docu, a report for consideration at council, so it's not a binding decision. And I now have councillor Trail, I'm just going to perhaps, oh yes, sorry, the monitoring officer's just checking the constitution and I've now got councillor Tillsley and councillor Wainwright, was that a hand up? No, that wasn't a hand up. So.
Chair?
Councillor Trail, please.
Thank you very much Chair. This is to be noted, I don't think we need to have a vote, it's just to be noted. Anywhere else where it's noted, it is noted. We don't need to vote.
Thank you. As I say, the monitoring officer's just checking the constitution and as always, I will do what I'm told on this matter, okay? Councillor Tillsley.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Similar question, if the council decided to vote against this vote, would that mean that the contents of this debate wouldn't go to Cabinet? Just seeking clarity on exactly we are voting on. Thank you.
I don't know if the head of democratic services would like to respond to that please.
The recommendations outlined in the covering report are extremely loose for the reasons that you've just outlined, so it's really about asking council to note the contents of the report, note the timelines that are up against the council, noting that it's a decision for Cabinet, but sharing any views that it wishes the Cabinet to consider as part of its decision making process. If members wanted to split those up and simply move to share the views to Cabinet, then that's absolutely fine, that's a matter for the Cabinet, but the recommendations are loose enough. I take the point that's been made, it's been quite a tricky one this, but it really is a noting exercise and the leader's already committed to considering all the views that have been made here today.
I think wording of the constitution, you're quite right, so if we don't get to a position where we can, then it'd fail, your recommendations would fail, but the wording of the constitution is actually in the case of an equality of votes, the chair or person presiding at any meeting of the council and the cabinet or committee will have a second or casting vote. So there's nothing there saying that that must be taken upon, it would just fail if that's not chosen to go with a casting vote. But I think it may be worth seeing where we end up first.
I also understand that members of the Cabinet have taken the view that they're not going to vote on this as well today, given their role in the Cabinet next week. Okay? Councillor McGough.
Thank you very much Chair. As elected member, I read it as we're just noting this report today and, you know, thank you very much for your time expressing all your views, but just with the non-representation that the councillors already left the room, they already thought the same as well, it's to be noted. So they're not present for the vote, therefore I don't class it as democratic because they're not here for the vote, because it says in the paper, just a note. So I, you know, if you call a meeting to end, I'd be happy with that. Yeah, I vote against it anyway because I told you that previously, but if the other councillors are not here, we don't know which way they're going to vote. It doesn't want to go back to the public like they abstained on it or they just basically walked out last moment and didn't give the due care and attention that deserves, which they did. So there is no vote to be taken.
I mean, if members are happy, we can just record that it was, it's a general view of the council, that this is a matter for noting and what has been highlighted here today will go forward, you know?
So I've also got councillor Frye raised her hand as well, councillor Frye?
Sorry, thank you Chair. I just wanted to note that all my colleagues thought it was just being noted, so, and they have left because they had other appointments, like hospital appointments and stuff, so yeah, we didn't think there would be such a vote, it was just noted.
I think it's just squaring, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's in terms of rules of debate, obviously it's a formal setting, notwithstanding this is a consultative meeting, but I think if it's the wish of the council to simply record it in that way, I think that's absolutely fine.
Yes, yes please.
Thank you for your contribution councillor Connet, thank you. I would also just to, if we could just hang on just till we get to the end of this, thank you. I also would like to say that the views and the perspectives and the themes expressed during the debate, and there have been many and I really thank you for being so fulsome in your responses and your questions, that they will be kept, they have been captured by the officer team and in line with the council's house style, they will not be a verbatim report given to Cabinet, but it will be about the general themes, the views and the concerns that will be presented to Cabinet and Cabinet members have been here listening as well. I understand that the minutes of this meeting will be published later today, so thank you to officers, I hope you do manage to get home tonight, but that's so that the minutes are available in a timely way, particularly for Cabinet members to be able to have full as much time as possible to consider and to think about what's been said and then they will be considered and debated at Cabinet next week. If you just hold on. If you just hold on, I'm just going to get a little bit of advice from the officers about what I am doing now. I think we may well be just noting this.
Yeah, I mean, we can put a resolution. I apologise, Chair. We can just resolve that it was the wish of the council to not take a formal vote, except the timelines and what was outlined and request Cabinet consider their views as expressed at the meeting. So you could just seek general agreement to that outlying proposition.
Thank you very much, I think that's helpful. So is that agreed, council? Okay, I think that is agreed. And in which case, I'd like to thank you for the time and closing the meeting.
Chair, if I may, I'm a former service person and I'm also a royalist. And I'd just like, on behalf of everybody here, to wish our King a happy 77th birthday.
In which case, thank you very much. The meeting is now closed, you're free to escape. Thank you.